Good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Sonoma Planning Commission. And I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll have a roll call, please.
Youth Member Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Barboz?
Here.
Or Gorman Jenkins?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Here.
Commissioner Willers?
Here.
Commissioner Wierich?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dombach is not present. And Chair Barnett?
Here, thank you.
Commissioner Nugent?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now take any comments before the approval of the agenda? Is anything anyone wants to change? No? Can I hear a motion, please?
Move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Natalie?
Commissioner Barboz?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wierich?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Chair Barnett?
Aye.
And Youth Member Miller?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Miller.
Nice to see you today.
Nice to have you here. Thanks for joining us. All right. Now, the next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask former Mayor Joseph Costello to lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Joe. Nice to see you. All right. At this point, we will entertain comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. If you have comments about any of the agenda items, it will be an opportunity for you to come up and address the commission at the time that we consider each agenda item. But this is an opportunity for comments about items that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Anyone with anything they'd like to say? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. And the next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. The way the Consent Calendar works is the items on the Consent Calendar, will it be approved or not in one motion unless a member of the commission or staff asks to remove an item from the Consent Calendar for separate consideration. Is there anyone on the commission or staff who would like to remove something from the Consent Calendar? Okay, seeing none? Then we will go ahead. And the two items on the Consent Calendar are the minutes. I believe, Natalie, you had a question or a comment on the minutes?
Yes, I do. Public hearing, 4.1. One second, I just lost it. There, I think it's 4.2. It says Commissioner O'Neill approved the minutes when it's a hearing item. So it was a typo on my part.
Okay.
So it needs to be revised.
Okay, thank you. All right. Other than that, I would entertain a motion on the Consent Calendar, please.
Move to approve the Consent Calendar.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barboz?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wierich?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner Barnett?
Aye.
Youth Member Miller?
Yes.
The motion passes 7-0.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Barnett?
Yes.
We still have an opportunity for public comment on the consent as well.
Okay. Should we have done that before we passed the motion? Okay, if anyone has a comment on the Consent Calendar at this point, you're welcome to come up and make a comment. Seeing none? Then we'll move on to our public hearing portion of the meeting. The first item is item 4.1. Mr. Willers, yes?
I'm going to recuse myself. For financial purposes.
Enjoy your time off. We'll see you later. Okay, item 4.1 is to discuss a possible development on a two-acre parcel at 254 First Street East and with its accompanying actions to approve a categorical exemption to SEQA. And we'll start with the staff report, please.
There we are. The project before the Planning Commission this evening is the 254 First Street East Project, UA 2336, located at 254 First Street East. It's located just northeast of the Sonoma Plaza. It's located in the northeast planning area, zoned mixed use. The maximum allowable density is 20 units per acre, and the minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet. The required setbacks for the front is a variety of setbacks consistent with the neighborhood at the discretion of the Planning Commission. For a two-story structure, the side is eight feet minimum, and for the rear is a 20-foot setback. Here's an overview of the site plan. We have First Street East on the bottom of the slide, and north is to the left. The proposed project is a tentative subdivision map, planned development permit, design review, lot line adjustment, and demolition permit for the construction of 31 for-sale condominium units that would be constructed in six buildings. The buildings are identified in the narrative and on the project site as Buildings A through F. Buildings G and F are ancillary structures to the residences. So it's A through, can't do my math, but the other ones are the residences. 22 of the 31 units would be one-bedroom units, and nine would be two-bedroom. There are two deed-restricted affordable units. One would be deed-restricted for low and one for moderate. In addition to the condominiums, there is approximately 3,300 square feet of common open space. That includes a pool area and then the two accessory structures that I mentioned. Oh, it is, sorry, A through F are the residences, and the G and H are the accessories. And you can see those on the site plan here. We have A along First Street East, and in orange is Building G. H is a little structure on the left-hand side of the lot. Most notable to this project, I just would direct everyone to take a look at the parcel size. It's going to be a key factor and shape for the discussion on the planned development permit. I'll do a little bit of an overview on the proposed elevations that will really primarily lead to the discussion for the design review component. This is Building A. I know the floor plans are a little bit hard to see. Here we have the elevations for Buildings C, Buildings B and C. Buildings D, E, and F. And as mentioned, G and H are the building accessory for the pool, and H is for trash We have some photos and simulations provided by the applicant. There are a number of entitlements that are before the Planning Commission this evening, so I'm going to try to walk everybody through each of them in as logical of a manner as possible. So the first entitlement we're going to discuss this evening is the tentative subdivision map. It's a subdivision of one existing lot, including grading and drainage improvements for the development of 31 condominium units. Each condo counts as a lot under the Subdivision Map Act. The proposed density is 16 units per acre, which is below the maximum allowed of 20 units per acre. Our zoning code requires a use permit for multifamily projects of five units or more. In general, the mixed-use zoning district is intended to allow for higher-density housing types, such as apartments and condominiums, in conjunction with commercial and office development in order to increase housing opportunities, reduce dependence on the automobile, and provide a pedestrian presence in the commercial areas. So the planned development permit, that's the tentative map, we're moving on to the planned development permit. And I'm going to spend a little bit of time kind of explaining what the planned development permit, what the intent is, what the objectives are, and then what the applicant is asking for. So the planned development permit is an alternate process that applicants can utilize for residential development that allow for greater flexibility than typically allowed under the Development Code. And so essentially, if you would like concessions to the code, we're looking at this through higher scrutiny and looking for trade-offs in higher-quality design to offset for the concessions to the code. So the goal is to encourage more innovative and desirable projects, efficient use of land, to address development under these four specific circumstances. So not everybody can apply for a planned development, and you can't apply for whatever you want. Our code really outlines specific things that we are looking at. So the four circumstances in which a planned development permit is appropriate is for properties with unique, challenging, or valuable topographic or environmental features; infill properties that are oddly shaped, narrow, or otherwise difficult to design using normal development standards; site plans or designs that are clearly responsive to objectives of the Development Code but which require variations from the normal development standards in order to achieve a useful innovation or higher level of design quality than would otherwise be possible; developments that include affordable housing where departures from normal development standards are used to reduce development costs while maintaining design qualities. So the first three are really the criteria that apply to the proposed project. So the applicant is asking for concessions to setbacks to the rear eastern property line as well as the side property lines, to parking, and to driveway width. If you remember the site plan, the buildings have been skewed. So traditionally, what we have is a, you know, kind of a square lot, and the building can be located right adjacent to the side and rear setbacks. They're requesting to twist the buildings a little bit, and the goal is to overall reduce the mass that is presented to the neighbors. So the buildings are a little bit closer than would otherwise be allowed, but it's just sort of a smaller part of the building. For parking, a reduction is being requested to the parking space dimensions. The City of Sonoma standard parking space is 10 by 20 feet, and the applicant's requesting that to be reduced to 9 and 1/2 by 18. And the spaces would comply with the California Building Code for accessible and electric vehicle charging as well. An additional concession that's being requested is for the driveway width. The code requires, not the code, excuse me, the parking standard requires 27 feet width for the parking ground, and they're requesting a concession to 24 feet. This does comply with the Sonoma Fire Department regulations and California fire standards for 20-foot minimum driveway width. So when we're talking about our planned development permit, like I mentioned, it does have limitations. Planned development permits may be requested for any development project in a residential mixed-use or commercial zoning district. The flexibility is limited to five characteristics. The first is structural location and setbacks, yard areas and open spaces. As I mentioned earlier, this is one of the requests is for the setbacks. Number two is parking and loading requirements, ingress and egress location. This is one of the concessions that's being requested. Fencing walls and screening is not, there are no concessions being requested to that. And same for landscape requirements and lot dimensions. So the proposed project is looking for flexibility under number one and two. The general objectives of the planned development permit is to integrate environmental features into the development plan, establish appropriate relationships between the development and adjoining properties in terms of setback, yard orientation, and building heights, creating high-quality open, common, and private open space, appropriately relating building mass to lot size and adjacent development. Specific to the objectives for residential and mixed use, the goals are to provide well-designed affordable units, contributing towards a variety in housing types and tenure, especially through the provision of a substantial component of smaller attached units and unit types that address identified community needs to the extent compatible with neighborhood conditions, facilitating mixed-use development that is well-integrated internally and with respect to adjoining uses in terms of type, siting, and arrangement of uses. That was a little bit of a mouthful. So we touched on the tentative subdivision map. We touched on the planned development permit. And moving on now to a discussion of the design review, which is looking at what does the structure look like and how does it fit into the neighborhood? Overall, the proposed architecture is contemporary in style. It incorporates patios, balconies, and breezeways to reduce massing. The buildings have a similar appearance, and the proposed exterior materials are below. It's a little bit easier to just see it on the materials board. And Natalie's going to pass out the actual samples. Another component of the design review is the landscape plan. This is kind of a good overview to show how the buildings have been slightly twisted. We have the proposed fencing. There's a variety of different types of fencing depending on where the fencing would be located. In addition to the design review, one component of the project is the clearing of the existing site. This includes the demolition of five non-residential structures that total 13,150 square feet. None of the buildings have been identified as historic. This project site has undergone a number of iterations of review over the last five, 10 years, nine years. So there have been a number of historic evaluations that have been done. The applicant did provide a new and improved one. The city itself investigated the property during the process for the train district and looked at trying to include it in that, and it did not qualify. We worked with Page and Turnbull on that. Here is the site plan that shows the buildings. The project also includes a small lot line adjustment. So the proposed lot line adjustment would be between 254 First Street East and 196 First Street East. A total of about 3,253 square feet would be transferred from 254 First Street East to 196 First Street East. And it's essentially this little, the strip that is in blue on this slide. I think we touched on all of the requested entitlements. As everyone is aware, any project that comes through the Planning Commission is likely to be a discretionary project that is subject to SEQA. The proposed project has been determined to qualify for a Class 32 exemption, which is for infill development. The reasons for this exemption is that the project has been determined to be consistent with the general plan land use designation policies and zoning designation and applicable regulations. The project's located within the city limits on a project site that is less than five acres in size, that is surrounded by urban development. A report prepared by Reinkon Consultants has determined that there's no habitat for endangered, rare, or threatened species, and the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. And the project would be adequately served by all required utilities and services. And for those of you who are not familiar with this exemption, these criteria are in the SEQA statute. So here is the bundle of entitlements that we just talked about that are subject to action by the commission this evening. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the tentative subdivision map, use permit, planned development permit, design review, lot line adjustment, and demolition permit, including action to approve a categorical exemption pursuant to SEQA Section 15332. That concludes my presentation, and staff's available for questions.
Thank you. Before we open it up to commission questions, I have two comments. Number one, when would be the appropriate time for the disclosure of any ex parte communications?
Before the applicant's presentation.
Okay. And my second one is I would propose that we, as a commission, take up the subject of this project, at least at the minimum, by considering each of these five segments that Christina has outlined, in which there are either entitlements or special considerations, and we act on each of those and discuss each one and then move on to the next. In other words, we would talk about design review as a separate discussion, and then take up the tentative map and so on and so forth. Does that make sense? Rather than a willy-nilly discussion of everything at once.
That is up to the commission. I do recommend that the vote, though, is one vote if, when that is chosen to be.
No, the vote would be one, but any of the issues that would arise for a consideration of one of these five areas of focus would be subject to a separate discussion, is what I'm proposing.
And that's up to the commission if you guys want to organize it that way.
Up to the commission or up to the commission chair?
Either one.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, now on to questions for staff.
Not so much a question, but a little visual clarification that would be helpful to me. Can you pull up that slide again that shows the way that the buildings are aligned with the neighbors?
I think the landscape, this is the landscape plan, but...
Okay. Do we have one that shows how it relates to the neighboring properties? And how that diagonal positioning of the, there, that's the one I'm looking for, yeah. I just need a moment to look at it. So the setback that we're referring to, the variance, the five foot versus eight on the left-hand side there, it's just that point on the corner of the building?
It's a little bit more than the point. It's a little tough to see here, but there is a red dotted line that is that 20-foot. So if you rotated... So there's like a corner, so there's a corner of the teal color and a corner of the darker blue color. Maybe a little corner on the side setbacks.
And do we know what the setback is on the adjacent building? I can't really read it, but it's in a light blue.
Let me pull it up on my computer.
What's the distance from the corner of that building to the property line? It looks to be approximately the same as what's being proposed here, but this is, you know, I don't know what the scale is, so...
Yeah, I can pull it up. It looks like the building to the north is 10 feet to the property line, and same to the north. And what's being proposed is 10 feet 3 inches for Building F, 11 feet 3 inches for E, 12 feet 4 inches for D, and 10 feet for C.
And so if I understand you correctly, the neighboring property, and I can't read how it's labeled, that's got a 10-foot setback?
Yeah, let me, I can pull up the project plans that might be and zoom in.
That looks to be roughly the same as what's being proposed on this side.
Can you see? I can...
So that would be like 20 feet between the corners.
I think it's a little easier to, the required eight foot is in red for the side.
Oh, there, it actually says it.
Yeah, and then the required rear of 20 feet is in red.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. That's exactly what I needed.
Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Barboz?
Similar to that. Put those plans back up for a second, Christina? Because this is also about setbacks on neighboring properties.
Oops. There we go.
Okay, to, if, well, since it's on the screen, it looks like there's a, the two-story condominium that's in blue to the north of this project is closer to the property line than is being proposed in this project, well within the 10-foot setback there.
I think what you're looking at is a roof overhang. My understanding is that the measurement is to the wall line, which is what's required by code, and the eaves are allowed to project into those setbacks.
Oh, okay, we can't see that. How about, do you know if any of the properties to the north, or any of the buildings in the projects to the north or east of the subject property are within the applicable setback requirements and got some sort of consideration?
I don't know what considerations they got, and I don't know, honestly, I can check what the zoning district is. You're not allowed to talk. We can let the applicant address that.
Okay. Any other question?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I covered mine.
Okay. All right. Now, we're going to hear from, we're going to open the public hearing. We'll hear from the applicant first, but before that, I would like members of the commission to disclose any communications that you've had with interested parties. Now, I used to believe that an interested party was a party who was involved either as a percentage owner of a project, or an applicant, or an investor. I have since learned that an interested party is also defined as a neighbor within 500 feet. So if you have had discussions with anyone within 500 feet of the proposed project and/or the project applicant, or any of the applicant's representatives, this would be the time to disclose that communication.
I'll start. I've had a handful of conversations with the applicant, both applicants, actually, and numerous folks who live within 500 feet. I attended one of the, one or more, at least one of the public outreach events that the applicants held, and had the opportunity to speak with several neighbors and take a site tour and hear all the positive and some negative things that people had to say.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, yes, I've had at least two conversations with the applicant, one which was way back when the project was first being contemplated, and then a conversation today.
Okay.
Two conversations with the applicant, one about a week ago, just general, overall scenario, and then a conversation today regarding an email. And then, back in September, when they did the community outreach, I had numerous conversations with neighbors, et cetera. I have also had conversations with applicants, and probably with everyone within the 500 feet, going back nine years. But most recently, yes, I've had conversations with the applicants as well as with some of the neighbors. I also want to disclose that the letter from the attorney, Brian O'Neill, is no relation to me.
Okay. And I attended a public... Okay, and I attended a public session last year sometime that was held on the site. I didn't really have any conversations. I just was a participant, audience member. And I did have a conversation with the project applicant about a procedural matter pertaining to tonight's meeting. And that's the contact I've had. All right, all that being now disclosed, we will move on to the public portion of the hearing, and I would invite the applicant to please come up and make your remarks.
Thank you, Chair Barnett. Before we start, is there a remote available? Did I? Oh, there we go. We just had it. Well, glad things have started off well. Good evening, Planning Commission, Chair Barnett, fellow Planning Commissioners. My name is Kelso Barnett, and I am excited and proud to present to you tonight North of the Mission neighborhood, actually, North of the Mission LLC's vision for 254 FSC, 254 First Street East. Before I do that, I do want to thank city staff. Jennifer and Christina have both been fantastic to work with and been very collaborative and supportive throughout the process. We also want to especially recognize Christina. This is her last meeting tonight. Many of us were here at your first meeting, and so it's been, you've done a great job for the City of Sonoma, and all of us will miss you. So, thank you. Also, before I go on to the presentation, I do want to introduce Kilby Stencamp. Kilby is president of the North of the Mission Neighborhood Association, and she is a neighbor, and she's been a friend for a long time. And for the past year, I have been her partner in North of the Mission LLC. And we are both so proud of this project, and we believe it is the perfect and most appropriate addition to our neighborhood. And the project is really a testament to her vision, and this would not have happened without her. So I just want to recognize her. All right, so. Is this a? Oh, there we go. So it's the top? Oh, it's that. Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll begin our presentation, like many things in Sonoma begin, at the plaza. And obviously, I've always thought of the plaza as Sonoma's front yard. We, you know, it's for us, but it's also for the rest of the world, basically. We're obviously an international destination. If I can get this clicker right here. But when we think of Sonoma, we often think of that approach to the plaza and going down Broadway. But for the neighbors and those of us in the North of the Mission neighborhood, we look at the plaza this way. And just like the plaza might be Sonoma's front yard, for the North of the Mission neighborhood, this is, in my view, Sonoma's backyard. And it's not just our backyard. It's not just our neighborhood. It's, in my view, the town's backyard. This is where, this is a part of town that is for Sonomans. And I promise you I will get this right. Oh, you're controlling? Okay, well, that actually says a lot. All right, well then. Keep, well, just keep going. This is going to be, so obviously, we have the bike path. We have the recreational opportunities in Depot Park. We have the vintage house where our town seniors gather. We have Little League fields where our town's children play. We have the Overlook Trail where we enjoy nature and the outdoors. And many people in this room were actually instrumental in creating the Overlook Trail. We have the Patch, buy vegetables. We have the farmer's market where I know Larry loves to go. We have bocce, which from what I understand is very competitive for people in this town. And we also have cemeteries where our relatives and our families are laid to rest. And so we really care what happens in this neighborhood. This neighborhood is not just important to the people that live here, but it's important to our entire town. And so as we all know, over the last 10 years, three different projects have been proposed for this very parcel. Don't keep, for this very parcel. And obviously, during the processing and evaluation of all those applications, our neighborhood was very interested in what happened there. And for the first application back in 2016, 2017, the neighborhood had some issues with the project that was proposed. It's not that we didn't want anything to happen there. We actually, in a petition at the time, specifically stated what we wanted to happen. And we said in the petition back in 2017, "Our request is reasonable and simple. A residential project that complies with the general plan, the development code, and that blends in with this unique neighborhood." Again, so that more Sonomans can live in their own backyard. And so when, over the last year, obviously, we're all sort of interested and know what goes on in the neighborhood. When Kilby discovered that the two parcels that have the mid-century homes at 216 and 226 First Street East were sold to a gentleman that you'll hear from later, we started, Kilby started thinking, "What is going on with the rest of the parcel? What is the future development potential?" And so she reached out to the property owner, and after a quick negotiation, North of the Mission LLC was formed, and through the help of many local investors, the land was acquired. And so then we started thinking, what, we finally have an opportunity. Back during 2017, there were many people in our community that said, "You guys in this neighborhood, you have a lot of opinions. You seem to know exactly what you want here." So we decided to step up and deliver what we wanted here and what we believe the general plan and the development code in the City of Sonoma wants on this site. And so Kilby and I, when we started getting together and started thinking about what we wanted to do with the site, we had a lot of different ideas, but before we really got going on it, we called Bill Willers and Carol Marcus. And Bill answered the phone, and he said, like many of you, you know, I know as Chair Barnett says, "I'm not going to talk to you about a project, Kelso. I don't like to talk to project applicants about that." And I said, "It's not, well, I'm not appealing to you as a planning commissioner. I would love you and Carol to be our architect." And so he got on board, and we started a visioning process. We originally wanted to keep the commercial building in the front. We thought it is a mixed-use site, and we thought that a combination of residential and maybe a commercial space would be a great addition to our neighborhood. And fortunately, after a few weeks of studying that, the economics didn't make sense. And so we decided to move on with an all-residential project, 31 condominium units, as Christina described earlier. And so once we came up with our plan, the first step was to go to the neighborhood and talk to our neighbors and see what they thought about it. And so back in September, we held a community meeting. There's a picture up on the right where we had probably 40 to 50 people from our neighborhood come out. There was a newspaper article about it, and over the last month or so, we've had a large sign on the project, on the project site describing what we plan to develop there with the goal that we want as many people in our community to know and be informed about what is going to happen at this site. And the good news is, the feedback we got from the neighborhood meeting that some of you attended was overwhelmingly positive, and it reinforced our vision and it encouraged our vision for the site. And we think there were a few reasons for that beyond just what I think is an appropriate design for a project that seems integrates into the neighborhood. But it's also probably a result of some of the previous projects that were proposed for the site that maybe had some good elements, but in our view, from the neighborhood, there were some elements about the previous projects that did not, that were not compatible with the site. And so really, by every development standard, I mean, let's start with the number of parcels and acres. This is the smallest project site of any of the previous proposals as a result of a few parcels not being part of some of the recent development proposals, but as I said earlier, the two single-family homes being sold, sold off in the past year. The smallest number of units, no commercial space. And on any, every development standard, whether it's site coverage, whether it's FAR, whether it's open space, we far exceed the open space requirement, and we'll talk about that later. We feel like the neighborhood supported our project for a variety of reasons, but especially about the numbers. We create a reasonable density for the site, but in a way that lowers the massing, and we believe is as respectful as possible, because these are our neighbors. We are not out-of-town developers. We're not even developers from Fifth Street East. This is our neighborhood. Development standards. And so we're going to play a little video here, and then I'm going to turn it over to Carol Marcus, who, with Bill Willers, her husband, really created an amazing and what we think is perfect design for our site. And she is going to go through and describe a little more about the project to you. So Christina?
Good evening, Chair Barnett, members of the Planning Commission and staff. And congratulations again, Christina, on your next adventure in your life. My name is Carol Marcus with Marcus and Willers Architects, 873 First Street West. We are proud to present a project that meets the intent of Sonoma's general plan, development code, the guidelines for indoor development in the historic overlay district, and brings forward much-needed smaller housing units, particularly in the center of the city, that meld into the neighborhood as seamlessly as possible. Along with Kilby and Kelso, we live within walking distance of the project site and thus care very deeply about what gets built there. At a proposed developed area of just over 34,000 square feet, this project represents a far less intense use of the land than the projects proposed in 2017, 2018, and 2021, which had floor areas of 49,000, 72,000, and 81,000 square feet, respectively, calibrated to the currently proposed parcel size. And interestingly, the proposed project results in 6% less site coverage than the buildings and asphalt which currently occupy the site. The existing uses on the site are all commercial, and all existing buildings and asphalt, which comprise 50% of the site, are proposed to be removed. Our proposal carefully responds to existing neighborhood and site conditions. We have tried to retain as many of the large oak trees at the southeastern portion of the site as possible and a majority of the other existing trees adjacent to neighboring properties. 22 of the proposed 31 housing units are 850 square feet or less, and two units will be made available at the low and moderate affordability levels. The city ordinance, which exempts housing units of 850 square feet or less from being counted into the 25% inclusionary affordable requirement, was put into place to encourage the production of smaller housing types in Sonoma. These smaller units will be more affordable, not only because of their size, but because they are within a development of attached units without individual garages, representing an opportunity for buyers to enter the housing market at a relatively lower cost. We can imagine these units being an attractive option for young couples or seniors wishing to downsize their living arrangements. As you know, a planned development application allows for greater flexibility in site planning and design than may be possible through strict adherence to the conventional zoning regulations. This project meets the objectives outlined in the planned development section of the development code by integrating environmental features into the site plan, establishing appropriate relationships between this project and adjoining properties, creating high-quality open space, providing well-designed affordable units, and perhaps most importantly, contributing toward variety in housing types, especially through the provision of a substantial component of smaller attached units and unit types that address identified community needs. The project meets all of the circumstances under which a planned permit may be granted. The site contains mature trees. The site is oddly shaped. The project is responsive to the objectives of the development code, and the project includes affordable housing. In this planned development application, we are requesting flexibility from the planning commission relating to structure, location, or orientation, setbacks, and parking space and backing area dimensional requirements. Orienting the buildings as required by the development code, with the narrow dimension of the building oriented to the front of the site, would preclude being able to rotate the buildings off-axis and would result in a project where two- or three-story walls face directly onto property lines and directly between buildings within this project, compromising light and view access to the neighbors of this project as well as residents within this project. Our proposed project responds to the thoughtful layout of the existing multifamily buildings at Meadow Gardens and Spanish Pueblo to the east and north of this parcel, which offer a multitude of benefits to their residents. And we are proposing buildings similarly rotated off-axis to the property lines, which have similar footprints and numbers of units. We are proposing flat roofs to further minimize the overall height of the buildings. Rotating the buildings off-axis offers the following benefits as compared to buildings oriented parallel to the property lines. It preserves far greater access to daylight and views. The neighbors are not looking straight onto other neighbors or to the proposed parking area. There's no canyons created between buildings. It expands opportunities to bring sunlight into the buildings, into all the rooms. It enables us to retain as many of the existing trees as possible. It mitigates the harshness of western sunlight, and it creates a more dynamic outdoor space, outdoor spaces which also have more access to sunlight. The open spaces created by our proposed layout complete the open spaces of the neighboring properties rather than presenting a wall to the neighbors. While we are requesting flexibility in the setback requirements, the rotation of the buildings off-axis results in very minimal portions of the buildings with required setbacks. Along the rear property line, we've matched the setback of the Meadow Gardens neighbors to the east. We are requesting reductions in the standard parking space dimensions, as Christina had mentioned, to, from 10 by 20 to 9 foot 6 by 18, which is actually six inches wider than the proposed parking spaces you will be considering later this evening, and a reduction of the backing area dimension from 27 to 24 feet. This request is being made to reduce the area of site dedicated to asphalt, to increase efficiency in landscaped area, reduce the area of impervious ground surfaces, improving stormwater runoff, retention, excuse me, and reducing runoff while maintaining car maneuverability. The granting of this request results in the provision of five more parking spaces than are required for this project. The height of the majority of the buildings is 23 feet. Next slide, please. There we go. Yeah. Five of the larger units have minimal third floors at 30 feet high, which is within the allowable height by right for all buildings in this zone. The red shaded areas represent the portions of the buildings that are proposed to be 30 feet high, comprising only about 10% of the total roof areas. And because this is a multifamily development in a mixed-use zone, the development code allows an exception to the 30-foot height limit, allowing a maximum height of 36 feet, as was requested by the projects previously proposed for this site. Next slide. The common areas, the pool and the trash areas shaded in red, have been located to minimize impact to the residential neighbors. The existing streetscape contains no landscaping. The entire front setback is dedicated to an asphalt parking lot with cyclone fence separating the back of the sidewalk from the parking area. In the proposed streetscape, the front setback is dimensionally similar to adjacent properties and is landscaped, including two large statured trees at the driveway entry. We are proposing to maintain a single-entry driveway curb cut. The existing power will be undergrounded, as will all utilities. Now I would like to address design review aspects of the project. Stylistically, the proposed development emulates the mid-century modern architecture of the four- proposed development emulates the mid-century modern architecture of the four neighboring existing single-family dwellings facing First Street East. The architecture is contemporary and incorporates patios, balconies, and breezeways to reduce massing. The buildings are similar to each other in appearance, just as the multifamily developments to the north and east are similar within each development. The palette of materials is controlled to create a simple cohesive rhythmic pattern of buildings within the development. This palette includes high-quality cement plaster with porcelain tile infill wall panels of a contrasting color to help reduce large facades, thermally broken aluminum windows and doors, decorative painted metal balcony railings, privacy screenings at patios, and TPO roofing membrane roofs. The proposed color palettes are neutral to blend in with existing development. The poolhouse and trash enclosure incorporate the architectural features of the primary structures, specifically the color and materials. Site lighting is designed to provide sufficient lighting along the pedestrian paths and in the parking area, directing light toward these areas and not towards neighbors as required by Sonoma's municipal code. Pedestrian path light bollards are 3 1/4 feet high, and the parking area pole lights are 15 feet high. Downward-directed wall sconces mounted at eight feet high complete the site lighting plan. All lights are metal with a matte powder-coated finish to complement the metalwork on the buildings. And the following are several images to illustrate the use of materials and colors. Building, there we go. Okay. In the landscape of this project, we have strived to maintain as many of the existing mature trees as possible, particularly at the southeastern portion of the property, as well as many of the existing trees adjacent to residential neighbors. The landscape plan intends to complement and enhance the architecture of the project as well as the neighborhood. Plant selections will vary to create visual interest. There will be a mixture of deciduous and evergreen plants, yet we'll have a degree of repetition that will create a sense of unity and continuity. The overall landscape plan and plantings will comply with the water efficiency landscape ordinance. And in conclusion, this should be the last slide, we believe that you will be able to make the five findings that you are required to make in order to grant this project a planned development permit. The project is consistent with Sonoma's general plan and development code. The various use and development elements relate to one another to justify exceptions to the normal standards of the development code. The project creatively addresses identified physical and environmental constraints and meets identified housing needs, and is well-integrated into its setting while retaining many of the desirable natural features of the site. We request that you approve the tentative subdivision map, use permit, planned development permit, design review, lot-line adjustment, demolition permit, and the Class 32 infill development categorical exemption of the state SEQA guidelines. We hope that you will agree that 254 First Street East will not only be an asset to its neighborhood, but to the city of Sonoma as a whole. And I believe Kelso would like to say some more words. Thank you.
Thank you very much Carol, and thank you and Bill for all the great work. I also want to recognize and credit our landscape architect, whose work you just saw, Ron Wellander. So I want to just, we can go through this fairly quickly. I just want to emphasize a few points that obviously are probably going to be project issues that will be discussed, and they've already been discussed, primarily the setback request through the planned development permit. This graphic, which was in the project narrative but which you see on the screen, shows the way our Project 254 FSE approaches the eastern property line to our neighbors at Meadow Gardens, and it shows that we are 10 feet back from the property line, and it shows Meadow Gardens is also 10 feet back from the property line. So we've tried to mimic that setback, and it shows because of the rotated nature of our structures, the setback starts at the corner, but as has been discussed earlier, the entire building could be parallel to the property line, but because it's rotated, there's much less mass within that setback. Next slide, please. You also see that on the northern property line, even a smaller amount due to the way it is angled and rotated, and so while we understand that the setback is eight feet and we're requesting a five-foot setback, there is a very small amount of mass within that setback. And to answer the question earlier, it does appear that Spanish Pueblo is much closer to the property line than 10 feet, but what you're looking at is the roof overhang. And I believe roof overhangs are allowed per our code within the setback. Also, to answer a question earlier in terms of did they get concessions, Spanish Pueblo was developed in the early to mid-1970s. Meadow Gardens was developed, I believe, in the mid-1970s, and I don't know what our code was at the time. Perhaps they weren't granted any concessions because those were the setbacks at the time. Next slide, please. Actually, as we discussed earlier, we are asking for a lot-line adjustment. We just wanted to explain a little to the commission about why. During our due diligence and as we were working on the project, we discovered that the project has a roadway easement over the Spanish Pueblo's roadway that goes north to Blue Wing Drive. All the projects proposed for the site historically have used that strip of land to First Street East as the second point of egress. Because we found this easement and because we have a second point of egress to Blue Wing Drive, we no longer needed that second point of egress, that strip of land between 196 First Street East and 216 First Street East, and so that is why we're asking for the lot-line adjustment, and the owners of 196 First Street East will be benefiting from that lot-line adjustment. And you see the graphic that was in SASS's presentation. Next slide, please. Demolition permit, again, we can go through this very quickly because Christina covered it during her presentation, but we have had multiple, if not three to four historic evaluations over the last 10 years on this site. All of them have determined that the structures are not historically significant. This was the original headquarters of the Acme Leather Company. It was a company that moved up from San Francisco to develop their plant right alongside the railroad tracks, which now is the bike path. The two mid-century homes on First Street East were the owners of the Acme Leather Company's homes, and so this was originally, it was always under common ownership until 2023. And so that is the history of the site. It does not rise to the level of significance, and because we feel like the cost of rehabilitating the structures far outweighs the benefit of providing more housing units for the community, we are requesting a demolition permit. What's next? We have fulfilled all the five elements to qualify for a categorical exemption, which includes, as just discussed, the historic, there's no historic resources. There's also this report that Lincoln Consultants did in the last year has analyzed all the different elements, whether it's biology, or water quality, traffic, VMT, et cetera, air quality, and on every element, this project will not have a significant effect on the environment. That's also as a result of the fact that this is a repeat, I believe, housing element site. It was in the fifth housing element cycle, and it's now in the sixth housing element cycle, and obviously an EIR is certified as part of that housing element site, and they envisioned a development such as like this at the site, and it didn't anticipate any significant effect on the environment, and our categorical exemption backed up that And now we're at the point in the presentation where I would like to briefly discuss another request that Northern Mission LLC has of the Planning Commission tonight. We reviewed the conditions of approval. We received them last Friday when the staff report was posted, and we are happy with all the conditions of the approval, including the affordable housing in Luffy. As discussed earlier, we are providing nine units over 850 square feet, so per the code that requires 25% affordable, that calculates to 2.25 affordable units. We've obviously provided two. The .25 we have provided via in Luffy through a new Nexus study analysis that was approved by the City Council in early 2023, which calculates to roughly $150,000 into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which sort of, if you extrapolate that out, it results in about basically a $600,000 fee per affordable housing unit, and so that is a condition of approval, and we accept that and are happy to pay that fee into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The one condition of approval, condition number 16, it's the parkland dedication fee, also known in the state of California as the Quimby Act. And I just wanted to bring some, the Quimby Act to your attention, and some recent court rulings that affect the Quimby Act. And so briefly, the Quimby Act was passed by the state of California with the honorable and reasonable goal that as the city expands through new housing units, we need to provide more parks for the new residents of those housing units. And the state of California has allowed local municipalities to assess this fee upon the approval of a tentative map. And the Quimby Act has a ratio, and basically the goal of the state of California is for neighborhoods to have three to five acres of parkland per thousand residents. And really, this was designed for those new master-planned communities and subdivisions of single-family homes that were developed throughout California since the 1970s this act was passed. And there's an example of the concept of the act in Sonoma, when Montclair Park was developed south of Newcomb Street in the early 1990s. The developer of that project dedicated land to the city, and there is a, I believe it's Gene Carter Park within that neighborhood. When the development off of Fifth Street East was developed in the early 2000s, there is a Sonoma Valley Oaks Park in the middle of it. The developer dedicated that land to the city. There is a reason for the Quimby Act. And again, the ratio is three to five units, not units, three to five acres of parkland per thousand residents in a neighborhood. So, next slide. And, and next slide. I mean, it's, really, the goal was three, but local municipalities have the ability to go up to five. And so as precedent, and as we can sort of try to learn more about the Quimby Act, back in 2022, the Planning Commission approved a tentative map for Hummingbird cottages on Fifth Street West and West MacArthur. And in the conditions of approval, the developer of that site was assessed a Quimby Act fee of $460,000. And if you look, go to a website, Parks for California, you can type in the address of any site, and it brings up the population within a half-mile radius, and it shows the amount of the acres of park within, and public space and parkland within that half-mile radius. And so I believe, I mean, you can see the population there, but the key point there is in southwest Sonoma, in that radius, there's only two and a half acres of park, so you can understand the need for a Quimby fee at that location. And that's actually why I believe former Mayor Lowe is really with the city moving forward on a park just north of Hummingbird on the corner of Fifth Street West and West MacArthur to create more parkland in that area, and I wouldn't be surprised if the Quimby fee for the Hummingbird project is helping to support the development of that park. Let's also remember that the Hummingbird cottages has the bare minimum of open space for that development. So let's go to the next slide, and this is my favorite slide. It shows that in a half-mile radius of 254 First Street East, not only do we have more than three acres of parks within a half-mile radius, not only do we have more than five acres of parks, we have, I can't read that, but I, how many?
Ninety-four.
94.8 acres of parks within a half-mile radius of our site. And obviously, we know what these parks are. It's the Overlook Trail, it's General Vallejo's home, it's Depot Park, it's the Plaza, it's Field of Dreams. The neighborhood, we are lucky, we all love, obviously, living in a neighborhood, I discussed earlier, it's Sonoma's backyard. It's our backyard because of all the beautiful parkland we have in the neighborhood. So to assess, okay. Please, thank you. So to assess the fee per Sonoma Municipal Code 161030, the Planning Commission must make findings required for dedications and exactions. And there's a few things I want to bring to your attention. First of all, it says the Planning Commission may require any of these dedications or exactions. So it is within your authority to decide whether or not to assess a parkland fee, a Quimby Act fee, but if you decide to assess that fee, you must make findings. You have to identify the purpose for that dedication or exaction, and then you have to demonstrate that there is a reasonable relationship between the need for the dedication or exaction and the characteristics and impacts of the subdivision from which the dedication or exaction is required. And so up until this point, I have not seen in this conditions of approval, I have not seen any findings that the Planning Commission is making to assess this fee. Next slide, please. And, and this is important, and this obviously happened recently, as last month, the U.S. Supreme Court decided in Sheets versus County of El Dorado, California, it was an unanimous decision, so this is a decision where Justice Clarence Thomas and Justice Sonia Sotomayor agreed, that, and they talked specifically about these types of exactions and fees, and obviously El Dorado County is in California. And they said that the Quimby Act must have an essential nexus, and permit conditions must have rough proportionality to the development's impact on the land use interest, and the Quimby Act has already discussed this, and the city of Sonoma has not conducted a sufficient analysis to support this essential nexus. And as a result, many communities around us, Petaluma, Windsor, Healdsburg, have passed Nexus studies and have started implementing park impact fees for this very reason, but until this point, Sonoma has not done that. And in the view of the applicant, and, you know, in the view of, you know, anyone that can read the municipal code, without supporting documentation, I don't believe the city or the Planning Commission can make the findings necessary to demonstrate this proposed fee has the essential nexus, and I've tried to explain the reasons why. And it's not just because we have 94 acres of parkland within a half-mile of the site. As Carol discussed earlier, we have over double the amount of open space required on our project's site, and we also have a pool amenity and an exercise amenity, and in many cities, the developer is allowed to take that open space credit and that pool credit against the Quimby fee, and Sonoma's municipal code does not allow So in my view, I think it's actually easier to make findings to waive this fee for the reasons discussed earlier. We have, the city as a whole, by the way, the goal is three to five acres of parks. We have nine acres of city parks per thousand residents as a city. We have over 200 acres of total parkland per thousand residents, and so we have an amazing, we're very lucky, we're blessed to have so many acres of parks in our town. As I just said, this project was designed with double the amount of open space. So we appreciate you taking the time to hear our presentation. We, again, as Carol said, respectfully request the approval of the permits we've requested, and we also request to, for the reasons just described, the waiving of Condition of Approval 16, the parkland dedication fee, and both Carol and Kilby and I, we are here for any questions you may have. And the only thing we would request is if after public comment, if there are any questions that the public has or commissioners have, that we would be allowed to come back up and answer them. And so, again, it was a real honor to present to the Planning Commission tonight. We're very proud of our project, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see if members of the commission have any questions for the applicant. All right. Well, we're going to move to the public comment portion, but I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. Call the meeting back to order, please. Okay, at this point, we're going to start the public comment. I, I'm not a lover of using the clock timer for public comments. However, it partially depends on how many people are intending to speak. So if you're intending to speak on this matter, can you just indicate by raising your hands? Two, three, four, five, six. Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to start the public comment period. I'm not going to use the timer. I would ask you to try to keep your remarks concise, and the timer usually has a three-minute limit. I'm not going to strictly hold you to it. But if you go on too long, I'm going to pipe up and ask you to wrap it up. So whoever would like to come up, approach the lectern, give, give your name and your address for the record, so that we can contact you later if this matter returns to the agenda. And, please, go ahead.
All right. My name is Pete Weed. My wife and I live at 195 Guadalupe Drive, a single-story building that needs the mic turned on.
No, it's on, it's just.
Oh, it's just, I'm in the wrong place. Excuse me. Anyway, we, we occupy a single-story unit on the northeast corner of the site. And before I get really start, I'd like to first compliment the Planning Commission and its staff for its hard work, diligence, and attention to detail during the 15 years we've been associated as both a visitor and resident of this property. We strongly support the improvements, improvement, rather, of this site, and believe the proposed plan enhances the neighborhood much more readily than any of the other plans we've seen in the last 15 years. However, our home is the only single-story home in the site's northeast boundary. Our 10 to 40-foot setback from the property wall enables us to enjoy a fully landscaped and appointed patio. And I've got some photographs. I don't know if you can bring them up, or how you want to. That's, that's our backyard. At a September 9th meeting at our home, we're sitting on the patio with the principals, or the Afghan principals, who expressed surprise that our home was a single-story, not a two-story home. Encroachment of a single-story home into a minimal side yard setback opposite another single-story home is one thing. Over encroachment of a two-story home with roof deck and cupola overlooking on and into the single-story home, as justified in pages two and five of the proposed, excuse me, the proposed project narrative, is entirely different matter. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask the Planning Commission to reduce Building F in some fashion, reduce to a single-story building, reduce the northern side to a single-story structure in a kind of a wedding cake or terrace manner. Also, to increase the Afghan side yard setback from 10 feet for its proposed setback to 10 feet for the, the side yard opposite our building, for, for Building F. Increasing the side and rear yard setbacks in this area provide for enhanced landscaping, which right now is pretty minimal as I read the plan. In addition, we respectfully request elimination of the roof deck and cupola proposed for, for Buildings F and E. Including these adjustments will benefit not only the North Mission neighborhood, but also the four residential buildings along the project's immediate northeastern residential, residential neighborhood. Can you bring up a, the site plan graphic by any chance? While, while they're doing that, the project has created wonderful boundary spaces presented on page two of the project narrative. Preserved oak and landscape pool areas overlook the vintage house parking lot and part of the eastern border overlooking a single-story residential building. Tree line drive and parking areas to the north and west of an equally nicely landscaped area as a part of the two single-story residential buildings that are under reconstruction. An attractive landscape along part of the northern border adjacent to the site's emergency access and neighboring parking area. These very nice areas are juxtaposed to the minimal landscaping and setbacks along the most, the site's most northern and eastern borders. You have two-story homes with roof decks and cupolas within five to 10 feet of property walls. Minimal landscaping in the northeastern corner, rear and side yards. And Buildings E and F that back onto the two-story homes having the same rear yards, rear yard setbacks as the buildings overlooking the park, a parking deck a bit further to the south of that.
If you could wrap it up, Mr. Weed.
Yes, sir. Well, we are enthusiastic about the proposed plan. As a member of the North Mission of the applicant's Building F, we respectfully ask the Commission to increase setbacks and landscaping as well as eliminate the roof decks and cupolas, enabling the project to be a better neighbor to all of us. Most of you have received some stuff in the portal, some stuff from, from me directly. And I'll wrap it up, only to invite you to ask any questions as they come up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Who'd like to come next?
Good evening. My name is Duncan Wheeler, and I own the two single-family mid-century homes on First Street East, 216 and 226. The project, I believe, is a great project. For personal reasons, it, it's very flattering to the homes that I have, that I've done my best to maintain the mid-century look. And I think the design that they're doing really is a great, it brings them all together in a really well-thought-out way. And arguably, you know, even though potentially I have two homes that are going to be coming on the market with, with a full disclosure that there will be construction going on behind them, I'm all for it because I think it's the best use of space that I've heard for that area so far. So I fully support the project.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Commission members. My name is Sam Taylor. I live at 317 Second Street East. And I wish I could say I was happy to be here because the last time I was here, nine, eight, seven years ago, we were dealing with an entirely different situation. We were dealing with a more or less outside developer who was more or less going to max out every possible thing they could get out of this property. They did do neighborhood outreach, they talked to the neighbors, and they essentially did not listen to them. And they went about making whatever changes they needed to make for their convenience. So guess what? I am happy to be here. And I'm very happy to support this effort by Kilby and Kelso and the rest of their team. Because ultimately, we are never going to get a chance like this again for that property, which will be developed. We all know it. We will never get a chance like this to have locals, and by locals, I mean neighborhood people, develop this property for us. So I know that there are details here and there for some of the immediate neighbors, and I respect that. But in the grand scheme of things, how much of a better situation could we have than to go with this project? I wish them the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Jeanette Harrison. I live at 225 Second Street East, Unit 31. So I am directly behind the eastern border of the proposed property. Like Pete said, I'm concerned about the height. If you go into my backyard, and I sent pictures via email to Chris, no, to the public comments email address. If you go into my backyard, currently, if you look up, there's trees, they're kind of ugly, but there's trees and a lot of foliage on their side of the fence. And my understanding from reading the Arborist report is that those, that will be removed. I don't know if that's correct or not. So I would like some more information about the landscaping behind E and F. The, what is that? B and C are overlooking our parking lot. So that isn't a big deal to me. But behind Buildings F and E, I would like to know what the landscaping plan is. Because it seems like the Arborist is recommending that those trees that currently exist be removed. So I'm not clear about that. I'm also concerned, when you go into my backyard and you look up, my view is now going to be a two-story building. And I know you all have worked so hard trying to figure this out and, you know, make a lot of accommodations, but too close and too tall, just those two buildings. The rest is awesome. So I am happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Chairman Barnett, Commissioners, staff. Joe Costello, I live with my wife, Sandra, at 128 Mission Terrace. Mission Terrace is about a, the junction of Mission Terrace and First Street East. So we're about, oh, I'd say maybe a little bit more, a little bit less than a, than a block from the project site. And we, we support the project and in its, in its present preparation. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Richard Scheffler. I live 63 First Street and Cobblestone Development. And I'm pleased to see a project that is developed by local people who understand our community. I have two concerns I'd like to bring to the Commission. One has to do with noise. I noticed that there are a proposal of eight rooftop gardens. And if you, if you live up, where I live in Cobblestone, and there's a rooftop garden, as the crow flies, it might be 500 feet, I'm not sure, Commissioner Barrett, but any noise that happens there directly is in our backyard. And so I would request the Commission consider some limitations of time and use of these rooftop gardens to avoid noise that could affect people sleeping and the quality of their life. Secondly, I find it somewhat implausible that there would be no impact on the traffic flow on First Street by adding these units with these additional parking spaces. The current area obviously isn't well-used, and this will, and so there isn't much traffic at all. But even now, especially when you have the baseball games, as we all love and enjoy, across the street, I pass them coming down here, it's already congested with kids and families. And to have a, a unit put there with, with cars coming in and out, and visitors, and Amazon deliveries, all sorts of other things, I would have you consider looking more specifically at the flow of traffic and how to deal with that in an appropriate way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Chair Barnett, members of the Planning Commission and city staff. I'd like to second what Carol said for Christina. I think that it's a major loss for the city, and I've enjoyed Christina from her first day to her last day. So sorry to see you go. I sent in some comments, and, and in my comments, I, I made some about general plan consistency, housing element consistency, where I felt that affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis there was, was not even done. And I also made some And I also made some analysis of affordable by design, and I did, included some history that I did of the three meetings of the 25% inclusionary ordinance, where the 850-square-foot exemption was barely mentioned in that whole time. So that's, that's been kind of like a Trojan horse in, in that policy that has unintended consequences. I'm all for dense infill, and I would be for a lot more, and I think that's what the UGB deal is, and so I, I think that more infill is fine. So I recognize that this project is legal by the books, but I think that the 850-square-foot exemption of the 25% inclusionary ordinance is inconsistent with the intent of the ordinance and what everyone said of, of that the city needs more very low and low-income housing. So I would suggest, I have a number of suggestions here. One is, is that, that you don't approve this all in one night here, but you at least allow one more time around so that this can come out in the newspaper and other members of the public can have a chance to comment. And I'd also, so this, this site here has a arena site inventory of possibly 50, and there would be 40 above-market and five low and five moderate. So the way it is now with 31 units, there would have been eight affordable units if there wasn't this 850-square-foot exemption, but as it stands now, there's only one moderate unit and one low-income unit, where there would have been eight for 31. And so I think that's what the, what this unintended consequence is, and so then therefore it leaves people standing with trying to figure out whether these units are actually affordable by design. And I did some analysis of that, and I guess it remains to be seen if they will or not. But it's been said by other people in front of the Planning Commission and other city hearings that 800 square feet and 700 square feet, 750 square feet is not affordable by design in Sonoma. People have said it right here, that they're not affordable. So it seems like that's not right to have that kind of subjective criteria. So I think there needs to be a, some kind of calibration here of what affordable by design is, and I don't know if, if the developer is willing to say what the price point would be for the 850-square-foot units. But I'd suggested that since there is a deficit of six units that would have been there if this had had a 25% inclusion, that the, the developers could voluntarily de-restrict three of them at 140% AMI and three others at 160% AMI, thereby you would lock in the missing middle cohort there and not leave that up to the market. Because in my whole life, when you leave prices up to the market, that just is like, there's, the money's gone. So I think that there are some, some such kind of deal like that of maybe some other way of, of doing that. So I think that's possibly worth considering. The Planning Commission could ask, the developer could offer some way to mitigate the unintended consequences of the 850-square-foot exemption. Also, I think that in the 25% inclusionary ordinance, said that, that the lower-income units shouldn't be concentrated in one place, and in this project, they're both in one building, so I think one of them should be moved to another building, and that we could possibly get the price point on these. And then also, given the Quimby Act and the large amount of private space in this project, and so much public space nearby, the project, given our need for more units and more dense infill, could possibly take more units and count on the, the local public space rather than the, the public space within the project. I know on the Siesta Way senior apartments, all they've got is, is a small patio for, in their unit there. So that's, that's quite a big amenity, and so the amenities of living so close to the plaza with all these parks in a top tourist destination says to me that these units are not going to sell for something that somebody who makes 140% AMI is, I, I think there's going to be a bidding war, because I was personally in a bidding war for, for $150,000 trailer with 500 a month space rent, got bid up to $200,000 from 150. So you got a nice unit with a pool within walking distance of the plaza. I think that they're going to go higher, so hence my suggestion. And I think that'll do it for my comments now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you identify yourself? Some of us didn't hear who you are. Sorry, and where you live, please.
My name is Fred Alabak. I live on A Street East.
Good evening. My name is Robert Coulter. I live in 193 Guadalupe, Spanish Pueblo, Number Four. And three quick comments. Building F will affect my building. It's a two-story building there, next to the Pete Weeds, which is one story. We will definitely be visually affected. I'm somewhat dismayed by the setbacks. We talked about 18, 15, 10. Now we're down to five-foot setback. That's way too low. There's been no comments or, on the pictures, I couldn't find anything about the rooftop, where they're really located from your graphs, anyway. That's another thing. They're going to be looking right down at us. When's party time? What's the building? What are they going to be looking at? And where's the balconies? I think they're out front. Shouldn't affect us, but that's something I'm concerned about. One last thing, next to 191, there's some tall scrub visual, tall scrub oak trees. They're eight, 15 to 18 feet high. They're a great screen. They need trimming, they need some work done on them, but they do not, they should not be cut down. That will open the visualization to our units dramatically more. So I'd like the developers to really look into that seriously, that those not be cut down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Commissioners, Chair Barnett. I'm Francie Ward. I've been a neighbor to this, next-door neighbor to this property for seven years. First two years, living in Meadow Gardens on Second East, and then the last five years as resident owner at 183 Guadalupe Drive in Spanish Pueblo, Number Four, which is on the opposite side of our courtyard from Bob and Pete, and so I don't have the problem they do, but I just want to say I appreciate the thoughtfulness that's gone into this proposal and how, to me, it seems like a natural extension, a contemporary extension of Meadow Gardens. And when you live in these communities with things on a diagonal, it's, I have a, a design background, not in architecture, but when you live in things, it's like, it's not like if every, you could use the same space, everything's just lined up perpendicular, and it feels that way, you know, like in big cities. So even just using the same space and these angles, it really makes a difference to live there. And so I appreciate that. The, and I would like, I hope that you will take a close look at the concerns that Pete articulated in the email that somehow you hopefully have received, that also is what Bob was talking to. One thing I don't understand clearly from the pictures or from anything is where the opening on the top, the top floor thing is. It appears to be sort of to the northwest, maybe I'm misreading that, but maybe if it were to the west, looking west, looking toward the ball fields and so forth, that's really the ocean view, get a unique sunset every day, and it also then doesn't throw the sound up the hill to other neighbors like Richard. But anyway, I concur with Mr. Taylor that this is an excellent proposal, and it would behoove us all to just tweak as, tweak as necessary so we don't get more of these cockamamie schemes from outside developers who don't have a clue and, and have no interest in respecting what has been working in the neighborhood for so long. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Caitlin Cornwall, and I'm the Project Director for Sonoma Valley Collaborative. Sonoma Valley Collaborative has almost 30 members that represent a huge range of interests in the valley, from business leaders, environmental leaders, and multiple nonprofits that serve kids and seniors, low-income people, Latino people. Sonoma Valley Collaborative members have pledged to work together to increase, improve, and preserve housing that's affordable for people who live or work in the valley within already-developed areas to create diverse, safe, and complete neighborhoods. So as a staff person to the collaborative, I was comparing this project against our housing platform that's on our website, and also against our 2020 blueprint that's called Homes for a Sustainable Sonoma Valley. So comparing this project to those sets of principles, the collaborative strongly supports a lot of aspects of this project. There's a lot to like here, the reduction of setbacks, the reduction in the parking dimensions, the lesser pavement, smaller driveway widths, the clever design that enhances livability for both residents and neighbors, and the predominance of smaller units. Those are all great things. The big concern that the collaborative platform has with the project is about the actual affordability of the eight units that are supposed to be affordable. And I'm just going to repeat something that Fred said. I've been in this room more than once when Planning Commission members have talked about how 850 square feet is not affordable in Sonoma, and that we can't seriously call that affordable by design, and yet that is what is in the rules. So by the rules, you know, the project has met the requirements. So until that threshold gets fixed, maybe in the general plan, that would be really good. And potentially, the city needs a more dynamic measure of what affordable by design means so that it means something in relation to the market as the market shifts. It needs to change over time because the market changes over time. So, you know, losing the opportunity for truly affordable units is not a good look for a city that has used the strongest possible language to talk about the housing crisis here, and it's not really a good look, I think, for a Planning Commission whose members have talked about how this piece of code doesn't actually deliver what it says it's going to deliver. And I'm not really sure what the solutions are. You know, one possible idea to meet the very laudable intent of the rule instead of its letter would be for the project proponents to donate some of those 800 square, 850-square-foot units to the North Bay Housing Land Trust so that they could be kept affordable in perpetuity. Some method out of the goodness of their hearts, since you don't have a rule that will allow the intent of the law to be met here so that we can have people who live in the city of Sonoma who are not affluent. That is what we've all been saying we need. So that would be a good face gesture or something like that, another creative method to actually produce truly affordable units in the ratio that city policy requires. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Joan Levon. I live at 175 Guadalupe in the same complex there as Spanish Pueblo, Number Four. I will not be directly affected. I live, my front is on Guadalupe. But I have a question about the side of the building. Are there windows on that angle? And of course, we're interested in building F. I've not seen a side view of, of what that building would look like. I see the, you know, the ones that showed us, but that may make a difference for the people who are going to be directly affected. If there's windows looking down, or is it just a wall? You know, I would like to see that, and I have not seen that. I think it might make a difference to the people who will be affected by that closeness. So I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Teri Hashay, and I'm also a member of this wonderful group at Spanish Pueblo for, I'm at 187 Guadalupe Drive, and I'm very excited about the project. A lot of us have been to many of these meetings, as Mr. Turner had talked about, and it's just a wonderful opportunity where they actually took the time to minimize what, you know, compared to what has been, well, not approved, but presented before, and in the consideration with, with the neighborhood and the fact that they are part of the community. I know that there's some questions regarding that corner building, which is where Mr. Weed, so I'm hoping that at least some discussion and, and would be talked about that. Other than that, I think the project is wonderful. I'm very excited, and yes, I will be impacted. I'm at the corner where the driveway, where the fire gate will be, and yes, I'm going to get all the noise, but you know what? It'll be so worth it because if they, if you guys don't approve this, I'm so scared of what else could happen because whoever else does it will make it way, way bigger, and that's not what we want. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Last call. Okay. I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we will move on to staff questions. I will give the applicant the opportunity after the commission comments to address some of the issues that have been raised by the public during their comment session. Okay. Who would like to start on the commission end? Keep in mind that we've got, as I indicated at the very beginning of our discussion, some fairly well-delineated topic areas that, that can be dealt with in terms of our discussion in a discreet and confined way so that not, we're not jumping from one topic to another. To remind you, those five include the design review, the tentative map, the planned development provisions, the demolition issues, and the lot line adjustment. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to say, let's start with the easy one first, and we'll get to the, and let me ask a question here, Jennifer. In design review, we're not just looking at the materials and the colors, we're looking at the actual architecture proposal, are we not?
You are. You're looking at the overall architecture, materials, design, massing, so you would...
Orientation, so on and so forth. Okay. So what I'm going to do is say, let's start simple, and we'll talk about the lot line adjustment.
Can we start with questions? I don't know how to put my questions... I don't know how to put my questions in each of these different categories. Can I just ask a couple of general questions first?
Go ahead.
Sorry. I don't mean to be a pain. Okay, a couple of questions. I need an education on, on this piece. Whatever entitlements are granted, and if the lot is sold, if a developer comes back, what wiggle room do they have while building permits are pulled on this project? How much change could possibly happen before it comes back to the Planning Commission? Since you're the head of both, Jennifer.
Yes, I am. So Jennifer Gates, Community Development Director. So not much wiggle room. So what you guys approve are, are what we're going to see, and so that is what the condition of approval is, is that they're presenting that project for a building permit, and any modifications to that would then have to come back for those modifications. So that includes the colors and design.
Next question. Looking at the parking and our parking standard, California's parking standard is 18 feet by nine feet, and they're asking for 18 by nine and, and nine and a half. Why don't we just use the California parking standard, 18 by nine?
I think that maybe is a better discussion for our next agenda item.
Would it apply retroactively then to this one if we...
We're, we're approving a tentative subdivision map, so we're really locking down those lines right now, but the, this is what the applicant has proposed. They could have asked for more.
Okay. All right. Okay. That's my general question.
Okay. So if you have no great objection, I'm just going to take us through these five areas, and I'm going to leave design review for last, where we will get into the substantive discussions of the architecture, the position of the buildings, and so forth.
Can you, can you repeat the five things? Design review, tentative map?
Well, I, I will repeat them. We're going to start with lot line adjustment. We have the demolition permits that has to do with the existing structures. Got the planned development provisions, that is to say, what are you allowed to do on a parcel that qualifies for a planned... on a parcel that qualifies for a planned development? Because the justifications for what an applicant can do are different on a planned development than a standard lot development. We have the tentative map, which is the tentative subdivision map, and we have design review. Now somehow you ended up with six, and I've got five. The use permit is obviously, you know, at the end of all of this, we will be dealing with a use permit. So that's the sixth one, which is, are we going to grant the application, under what terms? So, that said.
Can I make an observation before we start this?
How could I stop you?
Okay. And this observation is this: design review and the planned development aspects are intertwined because integral to this project is the, building, the buildings not perpendicular to the property lines, which affects the setbacks and means that you don't have a wall, but you have those little points that extend into the setback. So I don't know which category those go into, but that's sort of integral to this whole project.
I understand, and, you know, our discussion of the planned development is basically going to say, does this project qualify for evaluation under planned development? In other words, are the site characteristics and the other issues attendant to planned development such that we then consider this project under that criteria? And then the natural extension of that is to move into the design review and the look at the project as a whole. If we don't agree that the planned development criteria is applicable to this project, then there's going to be no reason to go on to the design review because this project has been designed on the assumption that the planned development criteria will be applied. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. So we're starting, we're going to start nice and easy. Lot line adjustment. Now, if I understand the things correctly, what we're doing is we're trading one access possible egress to this parcel for another. And the currently privately-held residences to the, that front on First Street currently have an easement that belongs to this particular applicant, and we're trading that for an easement on the north side that connects to Blue Wing Drive. Am I correct?
It's even more simple than that. A lot line adjustment. We have two parcels of land that are next to each other, and there's 3,000 square feet going from this one to that one. So this is governed by the Subdivision Map Act, and what we're looking at is, are we creating any parcels that conflict with our standards and minimum lot sizes? And the answer is no.
Okay. Thank you. So with that clarification and understanding, is there anyone who has any concerns or comments they would like to make about the lot line adjustment?
I do.
All right. Go ahead.
I think it's an easy yes.
Heck of a comment. So we'll get to, we'll get to, we're going to consider all of this as in one motion when we get to the end of this discussion. So I'm not going to ask for straw votes on each of these. Thank you for your comment. That notwithstanding, it doesn't sound like we have any primary concerns that have to be addressed about the lot line adjustment. All right. Moving right along. Let's talk about the demolition permit. They're asking for permission to demolish the existing buildings on the site, which consist of nonhistoric structures and that have been studied many times. And in order for this project to go forward, clearly, these buildings, as intended, these buildings will have to be demolished. So are there any questions, comments, or concerns about the demolition request?
Well, the demolition permit can only be granted if we have an approved plan, or is that not true?
I'm not asking for us to grant it. I'm asking if we are, we're not, we're not taking votes on these things right now. We're bringing up the issues to see if there's any further discussion or clarification needed.
My comment was, that's an easy yes.
You guys are incorrigible. All right. So it sounds to me like the demolition issues are not a major concern. All right. So let's move on to the tentative map. Christina, can you clarify for us, what are the issues surrounding the tentative map?
Not a whole lot of issues with the tentative map. What we're doing is creating the legal framework for the condos to be sold individually. So if this could, if this was a rental project, there would be no map necessarily, but the units couldn't be sold individually. So for a condo, we're talking about the airspace within each of the units, and that's what's really being created, along with establishing the easements and parking and the infrastructure to support the development.
So the major intent of the tentative map is creating a separate lot or parcel for each of the buildings?
Correct.
Okay. And are there any questions or concerns about the tentative map as described by staff? Okay. If you say it.
Assuming that that has nothing to do with the roof deck consideration is not part of the tentative map in any way. I mean, it is a condominium, and it is going to be one of the units.
I mean, it affects the lot line, so if the decks were eliminated, or, you know, potentially there would be minor changes, but I think we're talking about subdivision standards.
Right. I think, just to go back, Chair Barnett's goal is just to have conversation around each. However, the, all the entitlements are required to be voted together in one motion because without one, the others will not exist. So at the end of the day, it's all one project, all entitlements. I think we're just organizing questions and comments.
Okay. So I don't need to worry about the, we'll get to the other parts.
Yeah. The only issue tangentially that would be related to the subdivision map would be the Quimby fees, and that, that's where the mechanism for that comes into play.
That's part of the tentative map decision, the Quimby fees?
Correct.
Okay. So I think we at least need to discuss.
Okay. Let's have. Let's have a discussion about the Quimby fees.
Okay. Since I got here, I'll just give my two cents. I think we should waive the Quimby fee requirements for the reasons that the applicant so succinctly outlined: the amount of recreational and public open space in vicinity of this, the few number of people that are going to be living there relative to the 1,000 residents that the act contemplates. And the, I think the comment was, it's easier to make the findings to waive the Quimby fee than to make the findings to impose it, and I completely agree with that.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments about the Quimby fee?
Following that, is there a way, so I, in agreement, 100%, easy, easy agreement. But I'm wondering, and I, this is just kind of like off the top of my head, in waiving those fees, is there some way that they can, those park impact fees, could they be dedicated or a portion of, or some kind of a donation or contribution made towards the existing parks in the area to maintain the existing parks? Or I just, I don't know that that, I don't know if that makes sense or not, but it would be a way for the Quimby Act to be acted upon in a way that they could make a contribution to the neighborhood in not having to have those impact fees.
I understand. Let me.
Did I do that in a?
No, that's fine. And it's prompted a question for staff that I'd like to ask. At present, is there a formula for the calculation of Quimby fees? And what is that formula?
I can bring it up, yeah. It's in our municipal code for that computation. So the Quimby Act, just to clarify also, Sheets actually does not apply to the Quimby Act. Sheets only applies to impact fees, but not actual legislative acts such as the Quimby, which is separate from other impact fees that the city would create utilizing Nexus Analysis. So there are two different things. I know they sound the same, but they're actually different. But the Quimby Act itself, in our code specifically, calls out what that equation is. And as Mr. Barnett pointed out, it does say .05 versus .03, and so those are options. But however, our code does not give us those options. Our code specifically says this is what you're going to do. Staff did talk to council before we came into the meeting, after we received the letter, and we discussed it. And if the planning commission did move in that direction of saying, no, we actually don't want to potentially apply the Quimby Act, we would need to go back, look at what was provided tonight, to be able to make those potential findings and bring those back to you. Now going to the other part of that question in regards to application of those fees, it specifically calls out in the code that they can be applied to new purchase of land or rehabilitation of existing parks. So that is in there. It also says if the money is not spent within five years, it's returned to the actual owners.
And is there a specification as to what the dollar calculation is and what it's based on?
It is based on the actual fair market value unless the applicant does not agree with that, and then they can get their own appraisal of their land, and then that is used in that equation that you see. And so when staff did the calculation, it was around $640,000.
And that was based on how much land? In other words, in other words, if I understand the formula correctly, you're assigning a amount of market rate land or a parcel and coming up with that value to compute the Quimby fee. So my question is, how much land was computed as appropriate to the fee on this project?
The equation is actually based on the, if, I can't see it from this far, but. It's, so the formula is, it's, the calculation is for the total amount of parkland required in acres, and the inputs are the total number of dwelling units in the subdivision, the projected average number of residents per dwelling unit in the subdivision, and that gives you the total number of acres required, and then you multiply that times the average per acre value of land.
And so when that calculation was done, what was the calculated acreage of land on a parcel that's only two, some odd, two acres in size?
We're bringing up the calculation right now.
While they're doing that, we'll see if we have other comments on the, on Quimby?
Yes, just narrowly on Quimby. The findings for imposing the Quimby fee, as we've discussed, are, represent a much higher threshold than the findings for a waiver. And that, in concert with the fact that, I mean, the essence of the act has been satisfied by, by the numbers that we saw as presented by the developer with the, all kinds of parks with, within that, that area. I 100% agree with the idea of a waiver.
And that prompts another question, which is, is it within the purview of this commission to modify or alter the fee calculation?
You know, you cannot alter the fee calculation because it is specifically in the code as this. The answer to your prior question, the parkland required is .32 acres.
So a third of an acre?
Mm-hmm.
And the value of the third of an acre has been assessed?
Looking at fair market value of four vacant lots that have been sold, the value, the price per acre was a million.
A million for a third of?
A million eight for an acre. For an acre, and so then multiplied by .3 was 600,000. It's 1.8 million.
I'm confused. If the calculation for, if acre was a million something, you said?
1.8 million.
1.8. So a third of that is what you used, basically?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But it is within the purview of the commission to waive the application of the Quimby Act to this project at all? Am I right? Yes, you're nodding your head?
Sorry. I'm reading your redug again. The review authority may require any of the dedications or exactions described in this chapter through the condition of approval. So you have that. If you do say there is an exaction, then the next section of the code tells me exactly how to do that exaction.
Okay. So actually, the default is there is no fee unless we, in our prerogative, may decide to impose one?
However, precedence has been set in which you have consistently applied one to all developments, and so staff would like to go back, analyze what's been presented, to show how this project is different from others, to then make that finding.
Okay. So that would require, that would require continuing this to a subsequent meeting? Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Can I make a comment on that?
Of course you may.
Okay. Quimby fee. Couple of comments on it. First of all, this project is different than those previous projects in that they are providing communal open space, whereas the other projects did not provide the communal open space to this level. If, I'm doing my math real quick here, so hopefully I got the numbers right, but it looks like the open space that they would have to provide would be 12,400 square feet. And in the project narrative, the open space is 17,669 square feet plus the pool of 2704. So that's already exceeding the .3 acres, the 12,400 square feet. So I don't even look at this as waiving the fee. I look at it as, it isn't needed because we're already providing the open space there. Am I missing something on that?
I mean, again, that's something that we would look at and come back to you all if that is what you choose to direct staff to do in your motion.
My recollection of previous projects to whom, or for whom the Quimby Act was applied, and it was relatively late in our development approval history that we even started to apply the Quimby Act. I remember it came under Director Storer's tenure, and so I expect there's probably only been maybe two projects that have been approved before this with a Quimby Act. And if I think of them, one is the, the De Nova project on the large parcel the hospital built, what was that, Mockingbird? And Mockingbird?
Hummingbird.
Mockingbird. Mockingbird. I know, there's a lot of birds, but this was Mockingbird. The Mockingbird has no provision for internal public open space or park area in it at all. So that would certainly differentiate it from this project. And the other one would be Hummingbird, which, which I believe also has no provision for, well, it had it in the back corner, there's a tiny little rectangular, I mean, I'm not recalling the project precisely, but originally, there was a provision for some open space in the little tiny triangular corner of that parcel. I'm not sure if it's still being used that way because I can't remember the exact configuration of the map.
They do, they do have, they have two areas of open space on their site.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, Ms. Nuj.
One more question for staff. So the COPs for the 1.8 million, where is, where's the data, where'd you pull the data from?
Zillow. Recent sales, the last year, we looked at common acreage. I actually saved it for those different parcels that were vacant land, that were 1.5 acres, two acres, 1.17 acres for those COPs.
It, in my estimation, it seems, it's really a disproportionate amount of money that the Quimby Act, those fees would be. And, you know, in my world, it, it's just frankly scares me that we're getting our data from Zillow.
We're just looking at sales, so I'm not looking at. We're just looking at sales, so I'm not looking at.
Yeah, and I would just note that the condition of approval provides for the applicant to submit an appraisal of the land to use more concrete data for that calculation. So there isn't a dollar amount in the condition for that purpose.
Okay. Well, I'm, I have my concerns about the application of the Quimby Act in this particular case. And, and I will lean on the, the provision that we may apply it as indicating we have discretion to do so. I understand that may mean a subsequent meeting, but I can live with that. Is there any other comments on Quimby? And the, and the tentative map of which it is associated? Yes?
Following up on a comment by Fred Alabach related to the Quimby Act. As we're trying to make housing affordable, and if we have a 650,000, 640,000 Quimby assessment, that's more than $20,000 per unit. I really, I'm uncomfortable with that kind of burden when, like I said, I think that there's already open space being provided, and that just seems an egregious amount to establish on what we're trying to make affordable units.
Okay. Anything further on that? No? Then let's move on to the planned development provisions. And as was noted, that will logically flop into the issue of design review. Is there any concerns that anyone has as to whether or not this application, that the planned development provisions are appropriately applied to this development proposal? Keep in mind that the planned unit provisions have to do with a shape of a parcel that is irregular and is difficult to develop in the customary manner, or has other features which would push it in the direction of trying to accommodate a natural feature, plus the added purpose in the planned development of providing innovative, or I would say more innovative design solutions and ideas than are customarily required on a standard development proposal. In other words, what accompanies a planned development is a higher, more rigorous level of design consideration and planning than a ordinary development would require. So there's a, an increase in the, both the aesthetic and the design parameters of a project that go along with the planned development. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Christina, part of the reason for that is that asking to be qualified under a planned development standard is not something you just automatically get granted. It's something this commission has to agree to.
Yeah, absolutely, and it might be helpful. I pulled up the circumstances and the criteria in the code. It might help frame, frame the discussion. So in general, the planned development permit is intended to address development in the following circumstances. For one is properties with unique, challenging, or valuable topographic or environmental features. Two, infill properties that are oddly shaped, narrow, or otherwise difficult to design for using normal development standards. Site plans or building designs that are clearly responsive to the objectives of the development code, but which require variations from the normal standards in order to achieve a useful innovation or a higher level of design quality than would otherwise be possible.
So that's what I was saying. Mr. Barbos?
Would, Christina, would you mind leaving this up on the screen while we talk about this? Because it's too hard to keep them all in mind?
Okay, so keeping in mind what the purpose and intention of planned development is, as well as what it allows, are there any comments or concerns about this project as proposed under the planned development provisions?
I think that this project meets a number of these, or contains a number of the circumstances that the code cites as being appropriate reasons for granting a planned development. But the one that really sticks in my mind is number three, building, site and building plans that are clearly responsive to the objectives of the development code but require variations in order to achieve a more, a useful innovation or higher level of design quality. Turning these buildings is brilliant. It allows sunlight to go through to the next property that would be totally blocked if they met the setback requirements but were perpendicular or parallel to the property line. So that is, it's a brilliant tweak, and it helps the neighbors, makes this project a lot more interesting, and just creates, to me, a win-win. The downside to it is that point that sticks over the 10-foot. And I know that, that the setback issue is of concern to the neighbors, but I don't personally understand how that little point being over the line as it is, is worse than the alternative, which is turning it perpendicular. You don't need a planned development. You don't need a relaxation of the setback. You've got all the requirements met. You've just got this monolithic wall that would be less appealing than what being designed. So I think this is a good example of what this code section, which we don't have anymore, is designed to say, or provide for. And so I, I think that it does meet the planned development standard. You could argue about unique topical or narrow or odd lots. It's odd because the side nearest, the, the south side of it is at an angle with the vintage house, but the odd thing about it, I mean, it's just, it's really number three is the key finding that, to me. I mean, you could make an argument that the others apply, but I think that one just cries out for acknowledgement.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wire?
I think I can make an argument that each and every single one of them apply. But at the risk of taking the easy way out, I'm just going to join 100% and wholeheartedly in what Commissioner Barbos has to say about that.
Okay, any other comments on the planned development provisions?
And just to confirm, so there's, these are the circumstances, and then there's the actual findings and objectives. Do you want to walk through those as well?
I, why not?
So the applicability, I think that's pretty easy. It's, we're talking about number one and two. And then the objectives, we have general objectives, and then we have the objectives for residential and mixed use. So the general, A, integrating environmental features and other site characteristics into the development plan, establishing appropriate relationships between the development and adjoining properties in terms of setback, yard orientation and building heights, creating high-quality common and private open space, and appropriately relating building mass to lot size and adjacent development. Do you want to stop there and talk about those?
Nope.
Okay. A practice for residential and mixed use, A, providing well-designed affordable units, contributing towards variety in housing types and tenure, especially through the provision of a substantial component of smaller attached units and unit types that address identified community needs to the extent compatible with neighborhood conditions. And C, facilitating mixed-use development, I think C doesn't apply, it's not mixed-use development. So those are the, the objectives. And then we go down to the findings. So we have five findings. The first is that the project, the planned development permit is consistent with the general plan. There's no specific plan, and the intent and applicable objectives of the planned development section. Two, the design of the development is consistent with the intent of applicable regulations and design guidelines of the development code. Three, the various use and development elements of the planned development relate to each other, relate to one another in such a way to justify exceptions to the normal standards of the code. Four, design flexibility allowed by the planned development permit has been used to creatively address identified physical and environmental constraints and/or meet identified housing needs. And five, the proposed development will be well-integrated to the setting and will relate appropriately to adjacent uses and will retain desirable natural features of the site and the surrounding area.
Okay, thank you. I've got a couple of comments on this. I think the site design is clever and addresses certain unique features. For example, the retention of the trees, particularly in the southeast section of it is very appreciated. Had this been, you know, a more standard type of development, I think we would have lost almost all of the really quite substantial oak trees in that section that are adjacent to Vintage House. And I think the, the attempting to address this particular existing environmental features of the site has been done very sensitively. As it pertains to the affordable housing component, one of the commenters have mentioned, and another picked up on it, that there should be eight affordable units. Well, that's based on the inclusion of the private home parcels that are no longer part of this parcel. The acreage associated with this particular development as it's now proposed would not require eight units, and so it is not deficient in the number of units as proposed. The two private houses on First Street have reduced the total footage, and the, the number thrown out of 50 houses accommodated was based on the original parcel definition, which included the two private homes that are now no longer part of the project. So I disagree with the, with the comment about there being eight units required. Further, with regard to the 850-square-foot units and the exemption, it's really not the place of this commission to change the law. It's the city council that approved the 850-square-foot exemption, and it is not within the purview, in my opinion, of this commission to arbitrarily alter the law and require something that the law does not require. The law says, in the city of Sonoma, that under 850-square-foot units are exempt from the calculation for the 25% inclusionary requirement. I agree that it remains to be seen whether this idea for 850-square-foot units to provide housing for a segment of the population at a lower potential cost and therefore increase the availability of housing at a lower cost to a segment of the, of the condo purchasing world is, is something that will be tested by this project. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think if in fact it turns out that the selling price of the 800-square-foot and 50-square-foot units is significantly lower than a 1,200-square-foot unit and attracts buyers who otherwise wouldn't be able to afford to live here, we'll find out. And if it turns out that there's a bidding war and it doesn't work out, then my recommendation would be that the city council and the commission take up looking at that standard with a, with the option to change it if it doesn't work. But it's not within our purview, nor do we have the prerogative to change the law. This application's been submitted under the basis of the law as it's written today. And, and that's the deal. That's the way we work in America. We, we operate on the basis of the law. Now, speaking to one other issue that has to do, and this, I guess I'm flopping a little bit into the design review. I understand why residents in a single-story home really don't like the idea of a two-story home going up in their backyard. But you, but here's the deal. Everyone in Sonoma can put a second story on their home by right. You don't even have to come to the planning commission to ask permission to do it. Two-story homes are allowed in Sonoma. It's just the way it's been, and it's been that way for all 35 years that I've been here. I understand the concerns about privacy, and we're going to talk about the roof deck on one of these buildings or two of them to see what, in fact, how they're oriented and what their impact is going to be. But unfortunately, for those of us who have been in a situation of living in a one-story home, the reality of a two-story home going by, going up right next door is just the way life is in the real world. And so we're going to have to accept that as one of our realities. Okay. Let me go back to now the design review unless there's any more discussion of the planned development. I think this project meets all the criteria for coming in under the planned development application. Let's go to design review. We're looking at the architecture, the orientation of the buildings, the colors, the treatment, the landscaping, and all of the other visual features that are attended to this, the lighting and so forth. And so let's open that up for any comments.
And it might be helpful to take a look at the findings really quick. As a reminder, we have basic findings, and we also have findings in the historic overlay district. So finding A is that the project complies with the applicable policies and regulations of the development code, city ordinances, and the general plan. The project is consistent with the intent of the design standards, and for this project, we're talking about the northeast planning area and the, the language that's inside there. The project responds appropriately to the context of adjacent development, as well as existing site conditions and environmental features. And the findings for the historic overlay are really about historic nature. The project will not impair the historic character of adjacent historic resources. The project complies with the Secretary of the Interior standards for treatment of historic properties. The project substantially complies with applicable design guidelines in 1942, which is our historic preservation and infill in the historic overlay zone. And D, the project substantially complies with any applicable preservation plan, and that's not applicable to the project. I'll bring up the elevations and the design review palette if you would like.
I think it might be helpful if we had the developer and the design team address the, the issues we're talking about with respect to the decks, the landscaping on the, the north and east sides, noise issues, orientation, and so forth. Because I, I don't feel like I sufficiently, looking at the plans, can tell where those, how those concerns play out.
That's, that's fine. Go ahead, Kelsa.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbos and the commission. To address the, some of the neighbors brought up the trees that currently exist along the north property line and on the eastern property line. And they addressed an arborist report where it appeared that they were being removed. That is not our intention at all. The arborist report only records trees over a certain trunk circumference, and these trees are smaller, and so they did not make it into the arborist report because they did not qualify. But our goal is, for a variety of reasons, to preserve these oak trees, to provide screening for the neighbors and also for our future residents. We think a natural buffer is, is appropriate and would actually provide increased value to the project as well. Anything to add on that?
And just to add to that, from, for example, the roof terraces, the trees there will, to a large extent, screen that, that, you know, concern about being able to look down into others' yards. Those, those trees are meant to stay. They will get trimmed, but they're meant to stay. None of those are intended to come down. And I also just wanted to say that the, the roof cutoff lines on those upper terraces are going to be such that, to a large extent, there will not be visual access down. There's, they're very small roof terraces. They're roughly 10 by 12, roughly. I might be off by a foot or two. But the way the roof, the roof juts out on both sides in front of that, so that the angle of looking down will not be an issue. And also, I just wanted to mention that the, the north side, the, where there's going to be second-floor bedrooms, the window sill height on those bedrooms is five foot six inches above the ground. So you'd have to want to stand on your tiptoes, and that's, and it's for privacy for both. So you'd have to want to stand on your tiptoes, and that's, and it's for privacy for both, for the people living in the proposed development as well as for those neighbors. So, and the building, the window on the other side has to come down lower for egress purposes, for code purposes. But we tried as much as we could to raise the sill height to keep those issues of privacy.
Is access to the roof decks from the offices?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And, oh, did you have another question?
Regarding the rooftops, so I'm assuming this is the rooftop, the decks, it's common area? You've got an, or is it?
No, just, I mean, just to the unit owner of that particular unit, for one unit.
Just, just a unit?
A unit.
Okay, so there's no, there's no, there's no...
Common access, no.
Common access, or there would be no regulation of what hours would the rooftops would be used, that kind of thing?
The CCNRs.
Is, any of that come into play?
I'm sorry?
In the CCNRs, would there be the regulation of when that rooftop area could be used? I'm thinking from a sound, noise?
Yeah. We assume there will be. We haven't, obviously, at this point drafted the CCNRs for the future HOA, but I assume that the HOA probably would draft something to that effect. Obviously, the, all the units, but especially those units, would have to comply with the Sonoma Noise Ordinance. And the reality of the situation is, there's only five units with these roof decks, and so they are outnumbered by everyone else within the HOA. And just, I could see a regulation like that being part of any sort of future HOA.
And just a side comment, the orientation of the buildings, it's aesthetically interesting. So, and that's just a bonus.
Thank you. And again, we had a long discussion internally with our team about these roof decks. And the reality of the situation is, we, you know, they fully comply with the code, and we believe they will add value to those five units. And to the extent that Chair Barnett earlier said, the market, you know, the profitability of the project isn't necessarily a decision that the planning commission considers, it's certainly a decision that we need to consider. And so when you have such a large number of smaller units, you have to deliver a reasonable return from the piece of land. And this sort of gets to the affordable housing component, and to the extent that I can discuss that briefly and address those concerns. In a perfect world, we would obviously have more affordable units, but we are fully complying with the law. And ultimately, because we have reduced size of our units, at the end of the day, we need to deliver a certain reasonable return from this piece of land. And so if we did have 25% affordable units, that would require the 75% market rate units to be much more expensive. And that's sort of why, when we talk about the missing middle, that's what we lose. Because when we raise the affordable percentage, we raise the price of the other, and to raise the price of the other at the market rate, you have to increase the size of the other, and you get these bigger and bigger projects. And so that's why, in my view, this provision was not a Trojan horse back in 2021, when the Development Code Subcommittee that I served on as a member of the city council passed this, because the goal was literally a project like this, to create more smaller units, to create more units that are accessible on a market level to a larger segment of the population.
And with...
And as a result, I'm, sorry, Chair Barnett, no relation, as a result of the vast majority of these units being one-bedroom, and as a result, the reality is just the numbers, I mean, we hopefully, knock on wood, again, it's a market-based system, so hopefully that we do deliver a return, you know, the return that we expect on that. To increase the overall profitability of the project, we wanted to have five units that we felt like we could sort of maximize the return, and we thought a rooftop deck would be an attractive amenity for them. And the reality of the situation is, most developers would approach this project with the complete goal to maximize the return, and that was not our goal.
And when you were in, on 21, working on the development code provisions?
Yes.
Was this, was this project something that had been conceived of or is in existence at that time?
Absolutely not. No, there was a, there was an SB 35 application on this site for, I believe, 50 to 55 three-story townhomes, which might have been a good project, maybe, maybe not. I'm not, you know, offering a value judgment on that project. What I am saying is, new state housing laws that have been passed over the last few years have taken away some elements of local control and local discretion, and if that project had moved forward, they could have applied for building permits without ever having a public forum. And we would have had, on that site, 36 feet tall buildings at eight feet, in a, in a parallel to the northern property line, eight feet off that line, and the same set up 20 feet from the eastern property line. So they would have complied with the setbacks, but it would have been a different project.
No, I understand. My question is, when the 850-square-foot threshold was established, was the project that's before us tonight in existence, conceived of, or thought about?
I think I might be able to answer that better. At that time, the city was processing the SB 35 application. We were processing that from about August of 2021 until September, October of 2022. So we were undergoing tribal consultation pursuant to AB 52 for the 52-unit project.
And that was for a different applicant?
It was a different applicant. It was for all three of the parcels. It reflects the project that was in our housing element. So not just for 2021, but into, through 2022 as well.
And in early 2023, when Kilby discovered that the two single-family homes had been sold, it got her thinking, well, what's happening to that project? And that's how this project came to be. So to answer your question directly, absolutely not.
Thank you.
I mean, yeah.
Okay. We're back into design review. Oh, you want, you want to add something, Carol?
No, I just wanted to embellish a little bit. Basically, what Kelso was saying, the fact is, is that smaller units, first of all, I don't think that the 850-square-foot was an unintended consequence at all of that ruling. I think it was absolutely an intended consequence to incentivize the construction of smaller So I take issue with that. And smaller units are more expensive to build per square foot because they still have kitchens and they still have bathrooms. Everything that a larger unit has, but a larger unit might have more bedrooms, which are less costly to build. But they still have kitchens, they still have bathrooms. So in order to help subsidize the construction of all the small units that are being built here, that's why we wanted to offer these five amenities to the larger units, the roof terraces.
And I would also like to add, I do agree with Mr. Alabak that we probably should relook at that ordinance, but instead of removing the Trojan horse, I actually think the city should consider increasing the size from 850 square feet to possibly 1,000, because I think that could possibly incentivize more projects like this in town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's bring it back to the commission. We're talking about the design review portion, which is the look, the appearance, colors, the orientation, the architecture. Ms. O'Neill.
I love the color scheme that reminds me of the mission and the barracks, and I'm sure that our brilliant architects were thinking about something like that. But when I look at that design, I could never have dreamt this up, but when I see it, you know it's right.
Any other design review considerations or conversation?
I'll just add that I think this is a very handsomely designed and appointed project. I like, I like everything I see. I like the, how the buildings are articulated. We've talked about how that contributes to light cast and not shading adjacent properties from that sunlight that everybody likes. I love the earth tones. I love the clean lines. It's got a modern feel to it, but also fits, fits quite well in with the existing neighborhood. And I like every bit of it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Barbos?
I agree with everything Mr. Wyerick just said, and I think that the explanation given by Ms. Marcus and Mr. Barnett about the view from the decks and the protrusion of the roof of the structures below, excuse me, blocking the line of sight to the surrounding properties, in combination with the preservation of the existing vegetation along the north and east sides, is really a plus. So I think it, at least mitigates concerns to a large degree that I had about those design aspects. So I think it's a beautiful project. You are all to be commended.
And I just want to echo that. I haven't said much because you guys have been really thoughtful in a lot of your questions, which were mine, but I would say, one of the things that I've been really impressed about throughout the entire presentation and the discussion is, in fact, the attention to detail and, and the collaboration that I believe occurred with the neighborhood to really try to integrate this project in a meaningful way and really try to address all the concerns. You're obviously not going to please everybody, but I really think the attention to detail, the color schemes, the integration with the surrounding developments. I mean, I can't think of a scenario or a concept in this design that wasn't, that was overlooked. So I really want to commend you for all the work you did. I think it's an exceptional project. Thank you.
Okay. And I concur with the, my fellow commissioners. I think it's a very interesting project. It provides an abundance of smaller units, which we are not seeing built in Sonoma as market rate units. This was specifically, as I understand it, the intention of the city council when it approved this provision and their concern about missing middle. Now, is there a definition as to the economics of what constitutes missing middle? Well, it is by its nature a market-driven category. It's not part of an affordable government mandated or regulated category. And so, as I said earlier, we will find out whether this, in fact, is attractive and works as a concept and what portion of the market it satisfies, and things can be adjusted from there. But I do support the project, and I compliment the developers and the applicants on their sensitivity to the site and their concern about, their concerns of their neighbors. Okay. This brings us then to the use permit and a motion overall. However, based on what I've detected during our Quimby Act discussion, how would we construct a motion on the use permit, given that if we opt to decide not to apply the Quimby Act fee, that you would need to go back and examine the ramifications? Is it possible or appropriate for us to construct a motion to approve this project pending a review of the, staff's review of the Quimby Act? Or do we simply need to continue it and, and have a motion on the use permit at a subsequent meeting?
So again, it's not connected to the use permit. It's actually connected to the subdivision itself. We can, I think Mr. Barnett wants to say something, but the direction that I would give the commission is similar to what we do with other cases where you're directing staff to come back with the modification to the condition of approval and, and, I'm sorry? Yeah, and the resolution, you know, to further allow staff to review what was provided in regards to a not requiring the Quimby Act for the approval.
Okay. And if we had instead tonight decided that everything was fine, including the Quimby Act, we would be undertaking a different motion because we already have findings in support of that approval in your staff-recommended resolution? Am I correct?
We have findings for approval of all the project, and we have a condition of approval in regards to the Quimby Act being in there.
Yes. So, so the issue then is, if we go along with what you're proposing, we're simply continuing action on this item until a subsequent meeting, which we would not have to do if we approved it tonight as it's been presented, am I correct?
Can't we just eliminate that condition of approval?
Apparently not.
Our council's direction is that we look at what is provided before providing Planning Commission that recommendation to not find that it be required. That is from our city attorney's office.
Yeah. Mr. Barnett, did you have something you want to say? If so, I'm going to allow you to make a comment.
Thank you. I apologize for standing at the podium so long. I thought there was going to be a break, and that chair was occupied. I thought we were, we were going to have a, I had had a few things that I wanted to discuss. I thought there was going to be a sort of...
Get the microphone closer to you.
More of a back and forth. So again, I apologize for coming up to the podium, Chair Barnett. And one of the things I did want to address was the Quimby Act and the city attorney's interpretation that findings would have to be made to not apply it with regard to precedent. And as I believe you said earlier, Chair Barnett, the Quimby fee was never applied in the history of Sonoma until about 2020 or 2021, when former planning director Storer started to apply it. And so in my estimation, there's much more of a precedent that has never been applied. And I don't see anything in the code where you have to make findings to not apply it. And I certainly don't see anything in this resolution or conditions of approval in the current tonight that have findings to apply it. And so my preference, and I understand I am not the city attorney, and it would have been nice if he was here tonight, but my preference would be for the, for you to, if this is the decision of the commission, to waive the Quimby fee and just approve the project tonight. I don't, I haven't heard an argument that is really based in the code or really anything, and the only thing I heard was precedent. And in my estimation, the precedent is actually not applying the Quimby fee. Thank you.
Thank you. Question. Mr. Barbos, you're a land use attorney. What do you think?
I'm a former attorney who did real estate law, among other things. What I wonder about is, why don't we just approve this project without taking out condition number 16, if that's the offending passage on the Quimby Act, subject to staff bringing back language that has been blessed by the city attorney to support the findings necessary to do that, and then we wrap it all up and it's done. But for the fact, you have to come back with the findings that have been blessed by our city attorney. How's that?
That's fine. So it'd be similar to other cases where we close, we've already closed the public hearing, you make that finding, and we put it on consent. If there's something, a reason why that we pull it from consent because we want to have further discussion on it, then we could do so. So again, that is the recommendation from the city attorney's office, that we do such.
Okay. I'll take a stab at a motion.
Hold on.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Now you may proceed.
Okay. I move that we adopt a resolution approving the tentative map subdivision, use permit, planned development permit, design review, lot line adjustment, and demolition permit for the project before us at 254 First Street East without condition number, what did I just say that was? 16? Relating to the Quimby fee and further subject to staff bringing back this item with language acceptable to the city attorney dealing with the... to the city attorney dealing with the commission's decision not to impose Quimby fee.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barros?
Yes.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Aye.
Youth member Miller?
Yes.
The motion passes six to one.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot to say bill abstained because he recused himself. So six to one.
Okay. And refresh for me, I guess I wasn't entirely clear that our student member has a vote. She does, and-
She has a vote, it doesn't count, but she has a vote.
Also, she has a, her mother was a Peterson, so I'd love to hear her thoughts on this project as well.
Also, she's entrusted with the care of my children, occasionally, including tomorrow night, I believe.
I think it's a really cool project, and I like how it matches a lot of Sonoma, like the aesthetic of it. I think it's really cool. I think it'll be a great addition, so.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone need another break?
I'm sorry, I will take another break.
Okay.
what the parking standards are, and they're a bit ominous. I have a slide later on that looks at them. We did look at the parking standards and modifying them with W Trans back when we were looking at the parking management plan and the more broad parking code changes that we did last year. We started that in 2021 during COVID. And so I'll start with some comparisons. So first of all, the city of Sonoma regulates the size of parking spaces by use. And so one of the recommendations from W Trans was to simplify, to have one standard so that businesses could come and go, and they wouldn't have to change, change standards. So that was, so here's some comparisons. We have the city of Sonoma, we have Cal Green. The city of Santa Rosa has this interesting designer's choice with four different options. The city of Petaluma has one standard, Napa has one standard, Cattati and Healsburg. They vary slightly, but pretty, pretty similar. So what the public and developers need to deal with is our parking standard. There's another page too, but it's very detailed. And like I said, the space dimensions depend on the use. So this is the table that we currently look at. So it depends on if you're commercial, industrial, which of course, we don't really have any, residential or other. And so trying to simplify this is really one of the goals of the amendment. So we're proposing to have one parking standard for all uses, move the parking standard essentially into the development code to codify it so that developers know ahead of time what the requirements are, and adding shading requirements to try to combat global warming. Staff's recommendation is to adopt a resolution forwarding a recommendation of approval to city council to introduce the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have questions for staff? What was that?
We like it.
Okay. Do, how much do we like it? Good night, Mary. Thanks for coming. How much do we like it? Mr. Willers? There's poetic justice in this, you know?
I know there is. I'm just going to savor the moment. Actually, the first time this was brought up was at my first planning commission meeting. By me. At the first planning-
What year was that?
It was a long time ago. I was much younger. David Goodison was the planning guy.
Who appointed you to the planning commission at that time?
I don't know. Who, David, you?
Yeah?
Yeah. I'm getting older. Anyway, I requested that, at that point in time, that we take a deep dive into the parking dimensions in the city of Sonoma. And it was promised that we would do it. We'll get to it. So here we are.
12 years ago?
It was like 15 or more. Yeah. So anyway, I'd like to make a motion.
Public comment?
Yeah.
Open this to public comment. Anyone want to talk about parking standards? Too bad the teenager has left because parking means a whole different things to a teen, you know? Okay. Really, no, seriously though, folks. Close the public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Willers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance of the city council, of the city council of the city of Sonoma amending section 19.48.050, adjustments to parking requirements, and as follows. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please, Madely.
Commissioner Barros?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Right. Moving right along. Now we're on to items for discussion. The fiscal year 2023-24 work program, ad hoc committees and proposed additions to the work program, including tree priorities and night sky ordinance. And who's going to give us the staff discussion on this? Must be our community development director.
So this was asked to be brought back a couple meetings ago, and so I'm bringing it back to you along with the tree priorities that we had identified. And with the, tonight, I'm assuming we'll close the parking ad hoc committee. And there are opportunities, obviously, to do additional ad hoc committees if there is an interest around the tree priorities. I will say with the trees themselves, we are applying for a Cal FIRE grant right now to do the tree inventory, a canopy assessment, and the urban forestry management plan. We'll take that information to then develop the policies in, from, that are in the urban forestry management plan, and then use those to update our ordinance. There were a couple ordinances that we had identified to work on earlier. So if that is something of interest, some of them do apply to planning commission, others do not. But if that is something of interest, we can add that to our work plan for this upcoming fiscal year. Obviously, there's only one thing that's going to drop off right in the second, which would be the parking from our work plan. And then the other item was the night sky. That was brought up at the actual joint meeting of the trees. One of the pros commissioners had brought that up. And I think that's something that has become an interest to others. And so that's something that is also available to you. If that is something that you guys choose as a commission to add to that list.
Okay. Thank you. As a member of the parking ad hoc committee, it's my pleasure to disband. And it was, it was a very interesting and I think worthwhile project. And I'm now available for at least one other project. I think my gut feeling is that establishing a subcommittee on trees is a little premature. I think, I think, when, when do you expect the timing of this grant proposal to be finalized?
So the grant, actually, I'm submitting it next week. And we'll know in July, August, whether we get the grant. However, that being said, trees is a priorities under city council goals. And so I will be actually requesting funding for the tree inventory and the canopy assessment and to a portion of the urban forestry management plan in this next fiscal year. So we're going to still request the funds regardless if we get the grant.
Okay. That's great. And I think once, once that happens, perhaps it's more appropriate for us to form a subcommittee. And I would be delighted to be on that tree committee. And then the other one that's come up is the night sky ordinance subcommittee. This has to do with the degree of illumination of certain kind of lighting and attempting to reduce its impact on nature by, as well as the aesthetic of being able to see the night sky. So are those things that this commission or members of it would like to participate in?
I'd be interested in it because I think it'll also address our lighting ordinance for parking lots and that. And having had the opportunity to try to stay up late enough to see the aurora, realized how bright our skies actually are.
Yeah.
In a relatively rural community. And it's, it's kind of disheartening, honestly.
I had the experience when I was on a meditation retreat in Colorado at 8,500 feet to, one night, go out for a walk. And it was a clear night. And I was under, I came out from under some trees and looked up to the sky. And there, crossing the heavens was the Milky Way, as if I was seeing it through a telescope. And I had no idea that these structures were actually so visible when there's no other illumination at all. It was, it was a shocking moment to me. So yeah. Anyone else interested in that?
Is being shocked good when you're meditating?
It is a purpose of meditation, is getting shocked, yeah.
Just, thank you.
Would you like to be on, on the night illumination committee?
No, thank you.
Okay. Really, seriously though, folks. Close the public hearing. Go ahead, Mr. Willers.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance of the City Council, of the City Council, of the City of Sonoma amending section 19.48.050, adjustments to parking requirements, and as follows.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Natalie.
Commissioner Barboz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gorman Jenkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Willers?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick?
Yes.
Chair Barnett?
Aye.
The motion passes 7-0.
Right. Moving right along. Now we're on to items for discussion. The Fiscal Year 2023-24 Work Program, Ad-Hoc Committees and Proposed Additions to the Work Program, including Tree Priorities and Night Sky Ordinance. And who's going to give us the staff discussion on this? Must be our Community Development Director.
So, um, this was asked to be brought back, um, a couple meetings ago, and so I'm bringing it back to you, um, along with the tree priorities that we had identified. And with the, um, tonight, I'm assuming we'll close the Parking Ad-Hoc Committee. And there are opportunities, obviously, to do additional ad hoc committees if there is an interest around the tree priorities. Um, I will say, with the trees themselves, we are applying for a Cal FIRE grant right now to do, um, the tree inventory, a canopy assessment, and the Urban Forestry Management Plan. We'll take that information to then develop the policies in, from, that are in the Urban Forestry Management Plan, and then use those to update our ordinance. There were a couple ordinances that we had identified to work on earlier. So if that is something of interest, some of them do apply to Planning Commission, others do not. But if that is something of interest, we can add that to our, um, work plan for this upcoming fiscal year. Obviously, there's only one thing that's gonna drop off right in the second, which would be the parking from our work plan. And then the other item was the night sky. That was brought up at the actual joint meeting of the trees. One of the pros commissioners had brought that up, and I think that's something that, um, has become an interest, um, to others, and so that's something that is also available to you. That is something that you guys choose as, um, a commission to add to that list.
Okay, thank you. As a member of the Parking, uh, Ad-Hoc Committee, it's my pleasure to disband. And, uh, and it was, uh, it was a very interesting and, and I think worthwhile project. And I'm now available for at least one other project. I think my gut feeling is that establishing a Subcommittee on Trees is a little premature. I think, I think, when, when do you expect the timing of this grant proposal to be finalized?
So the grant, actually, I'm submitting it next week, um, and we'll know in, um, July, August, whether we get the grant. However, that being said, trees is a priorities under City Council goals, and so I will be actually requesting funding, um, for the tree inventory and the canopy assessment, and to a portion of the Urban Forestry Management Plan in this next fiscal year. So we're going to still request the funds regardless if we get the grant.
Okay, well, that's great. And I think once, once that happens, perhaps it's more appropriate for us to form a Subcommittee, and I would be delighted to be on that Tree Committee. And then the other one that's come up is the Night Sky Ordinance Subcommittee. Uh, this has to do with the degree of illumination of certain kind of lighting, and attempting to reduce its impact on nature by, as well as the aesthetic of being able to see the night sky. So, um, are those things that this commission or members of it would like to participate in?
I'd, I'd be interested in it, because I, I think it'll also address our lighting ordinance for parking lots and that. And, um, having had the opportunity to try to stay up late enough to see the Aurora, realized how bright our skies actually are.
Yeah.
You know, relatively rural community, and it's, it's kind of disheartening, honestly.
I had the experience, um, when I was on a meditation retreat in Colorado at 8,500 feet, to, uh, one night, go out for a walk, and it was a clear night. And I was under, I came out from under some trees and looked up to the sky, and there, crossing the heavens was the Milky Way, as if I was seeing it through a telescope. And I had no idea that these structures were actually so visible when there's no other illumination at all. It was, it was a shocking moment to me. So, yeah. Anyone else interested in that?
Is being shocked good when you're meditating?
Uh, it, it is a purpose of meditation, is getting shocked, yeah.
Just, thank you.
Would you like to be on, uh, on the Night Illumination Committee?
No, thank you.
Okay. Would anyone else like to be on the Light Committee?
I, I would like that one.
Okay, well, there we go. I recommend that those on the committee go to Sedona, because that's a night sky city. And you drive around and you try to find an address where we were. I had to get out of the car and walk down the street and put the flashlight on every mailbox, because I couldn't read anything. So just keep that in mind.
Sugarloaf Full Moon Hikes, you go up right before sunset.
Okay, and were there, were there any? You mentioned, Jennifer, that there were some items that had come up that we might want to add to our list that were not these?
It was just in regard to the trees right now. Though there'll be other discussions once, um, our two other committees meet, our ad hoc committees. And so there may be some very specific things coming out of those that will be presented by those committees to this commission that will, um, identify more specific.
We still have a Housing Committee?
We have a Housing and Streamlining.
Streamlining. Okay. All right, well, anything else further on this? Mr. Willers?
Do you think that the tree work will lead to revising the parking standards and come up actually with an ordinance for shading of parking lots, rather than just a simple requirement that's in the parking standard? A more developed direction?
Can be more developed. I mean, that's part of what that Urban Forestry Management Plan, you know, kind of sets our big picture policies. It's also something, you know, all these topics too, that we're coming up with new, um, implementation on, or things that we really should be talking about in developing policy in our general plan as well, and making sure that there's policy to support the direction that we're going.
Yeah, well, there's such strong support around trees in general, in terms of urban, you know, heat.
But that Urban Forestry Management Plan can then set that also start.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm, I'm actually really impressed with Sacramento's ordinance, and impressed with it because of how early, how long ago it was actually implemented. And what I find interesting about it is that it provides staff a really simple method for analyzing whether or not a proposal meets the standard, rather than a subjective thing that relies on, you know, your believing someone else's input. So, just an idea.
Okay, thank you. Um, Jennifer, did you have any comments?
Director's comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just had, um, a couple. So one is just a reminder that June 5th is the Joint Planning Commission-City Council Meeting to start, um, discussion on the general plan. We'll have the existing conditions, which are available online. I sent everybody a link to those, 600 pages. So if you're really interested in reading it, start now. And then, um, that starts at 5:00 in this room. And then also just a reminder that June's meeting is not on Thursday, it's on a Tuesday. So it's on Tuesday, June 18th, um, because that is the first transcendence present. So we have different meeting dates for June, August, and September. So those are in our calendar. If you need me to resend what those dates are, because I, I'm seeing some faces, um, I'll send them again, uh, just as a reminder of when those dates are. So please get them in your calendars, because they're not always on the same week when we, the dates that we ended up selecting based on availability. Um, and then lastly, obviously, we wanted to recognize Christina and thank her for all of her contributions to the city. And, um, we are going to miss her, but you know, we're not really gonna miss her, because she's gonna be here, and we know where all, where she lives, and we know where she likes to hang out, and, um, so all that. But we do wish her all the best, um, with her new role, and she gets to do lots and lots of long-range planning, lots of fun, different things.
Uh, we understand in your new position, you're not gonna have to endure long public meetings like this.
Oh, I'm sure I will.
You do? Uh, we'll see. But we all wish the best for you, and thank you for your time with the city. And, uh, just looking forward to, uh, having you stay involved in some fashion. I mean, now that you know as much as you know, you're a great resource. And I'm a firm believer in having the people who actually know things stay involved, if they can, so. Others?
I'll jump in. Thank you for what you've done for me over the years with trying to help me, uh, get up to speed on things and kind of fill in the blanks for me at times, and to have a better technical grasp of some of the more nebulous issues that, that we deal with, that as a person who didn't come from a background of architecture or construction or development, um, sometimes is, is a steep learning curve. So thank you for that. I know you'll do great in your next chapter, and, uh, you won't, like Hasbun said, you won't be going far. You'll be around, I'll, you'll be hearing from me.
Just to echo that, thank you for being a wonderful mentor to me. Um, as the newer member on the commission, um, I talked to Christina a lot on background. And so, uh, don't be surprised if I still call you and ask you stupid questions, because I probably will, um, but really grateful to you and all that you've done on behalf of the city and for me personally, and go, go, girl, with that job. I'm really, really proud of you, and, uh, we will see each other on the bike path.
Congratulations on your new job, but I'm thinking this is an interim job. I know it's gonna happen in three years, and so, congratulations, and we'll miss you.
Yes, congratulations. And, um, on my short, uh, time here on the commission, uh, you have been incredibly helpful to me. And, um, I've just been well-schooled in all, all things Planning Commission, and I appreciate it, and I wish you all the best. I'm gonna miss you. I don't know how many years we've been doing these meetings together, but there's been so many times where I could count on your laughter to get me through some crazy stuff that was happening. And you always knew your information, you always prepared, you're always willing to take my calls, but it was just your sense of optimism and your, your sense of humor that have, uh, really helped me, and I'm going to miss that an awful lot. I wish you all the best. I know where to find you.
Thanks, Christina, for putting up with me on our, our endless email back and forth on ordinances. And, um, if you want some help or comments, feel free.
Now, I feel obligated to say something, but I just want to thank all of you. When I started here, I came, you know, my background was primarily environmental planning, and I'd done, you know, land use in Marin County, but we were, you know, talking 86-square-foot additions, and it was pretty small stuff. And I interviewed with Kathy Capriola, and she asked me if I'd ever worked on big subdivisions before, and I totally lied. I was like, oh yeah, of course I have. At our first hearing, I remember walking in and we just got both, it was David and my first meeting, and we just got reamed by you guys. And not you specifically, because it was a different, yeah, that one over there, yeah. And it really required me to up my game, and you guys just kept us accountable. And by doing that, you made me a better planner. And so thank you for never letting anything get by. Thank you for, uh, being, I could always count on Larry and Bill to find the, the nuances and to teach me, you know, how, how everything, you know, why everything happened, and to find the, the issues, and it just helped me be a better, a better planner, a better person. And I have enjoyed working with everybody so incredibly much, and I know this is not goodbye, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of our agenda. And, uh, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone salute?
Adjourned.